Good evening, everyone. Good evening and welcome to the March 27, 2018 meeting of the Glendale City Council. Maybe I have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Zaga-Janian.
President.
Devine.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Sinanian.
Here.
Mayor Garpetian.
Here. The flag salute, Councilmember Sinanian, would you lead us to the flag salute?
Please put your hand over your heart and pledge allegiance to the flag of our nation. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for this evening's invocation. Mahatma Gandhi once said that, quote, "If we are to teach real peace in this world, we shall have to begin with children." Just last week, we witnessed the power of children all over this nation as thousands of Americans marched with them for change and demanding safe schools and protection from the acts of violence that continue to terrorize our nation. We pray for these amazing young people who have shown courage and passion to face a tragedy. We pray for those who have found a voice when their friends and teachers were silenced in a storm of bullets. We pray this evening for everyone who has stood with them and demanded that we live in a more peaceful society, free of violence and hate. We pray, we pray for those who have taken this message and carried it to the halls of power in every city and state and all the way to our nation's capital and who continue to spread their message. Let us pray that our decisions are always made with the welfare of our most precious resource, our children, at heart and at the forefront of every decision made here, for they are the path to achieving real peace in the world. Amen.
Maybe I have your report, please.
The agenda for the March 27, 2018 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Friday, March 23, 2018, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you, and what is next?
Presentation and appointments at 3:00 a.m. is the agenda preview for the meetings of Tuesday, April 3, 2018.
Mr. Cartalian?
Good evening, Mayor Garpetian, members of the City Council. Next week, April 3, the meetings will start in the afternoon with the Housing Authority. There are two items on the agenda. The first is a report from Community Development regarding a change order for legal services in support of affordable housing activities for the remainder of the 1819 fiscal year. And the second is another report from Community Development regarding the approval of the Section 8 Housing Agency Annual Plan for Fiscal Year 1819 and the proposed Section 8 Administrative Housing, Administrative Plan. The evening meeting of the City Council, there's a number of consent items. 4B is a report from Public Works regarding the Verdigo Boulevard traffic signal modification at Vallehi and State Route 2 freeway, followed by a report from GWP regarding professional services agreement with Hazen and Sawyer to provide engineering consulting services for inundation maps and supporting technical studies. 4D is a report from Community Services and Parks regarding a proposed grant application of the California Habitat Conservation Fund program, and that'll be for the Seven Trees Trail Restoration Project, followed by another report from Parks regarding the acceptance of Measure H funding from the County of Los Angeles for Glendale's continuing care program. At 4F is a report from the Fire Department regarding destruction of records at the Fire Department, followed by another report from Fire regarding an agreement with 3DI Systems Incorporated for Automated Vegetation Management Solution. There's two items under action. The first is from Public Works regarding the Kenneth Road Re-Abolatation Project, followed by a report from Community Services and Parks regarding the 2017 Senior Needs Assessment Report. And finally, there's one hearing that'll be from Community Development regarding Hotel Indigo located at 241 North Maryland Avenue. That'll incorporate the floor area variance, parking exception, combined Stage 1 and 2 designer view, ground lease agreement, parking maintenance, and operations agreement.
Okay, thank you very much. What's next, please?
3B is a proclamation designating April 2018 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
Okay, who is going to receive the proclamation?
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
How are you?
Doing well, welcome.
Councilmembers, staff, my name is Linda Burns, and I'm the Chair of the Commission on the Status of Women. I'm joined here tonight by my fellow commissioners. I'd like them to introduce themselves, please.
Sarah Kojarian.
Alina Smirjin.
Rebecca Alfred, one of the student ex-officios.
And terrific. She's terrific. Sexual Assault Awareness Month. It's a time for us to reflect on how sexual assault affects every part of our committee and our community, and we need to be able to talk about what is going on if we're going to take action to stop it. Lately, we've had a lot of time to focus on this issue through the Me Too Movement, in which more and more survivors are finding their voice and speaking out against perpetrators, hoping that by finally calling them out, they can be stopped. The statistics are presented in the proclamation, which will be read momentarily, and so I want to take this time to ask City Council and the community to join the commission wearing denim on Denim Day, which will be on Wednesday, April 25 this year. Denim Day came about 20 years ago as a result of protests in response to a rape conviction that was overturned simply because of the victim wore tight jeans. Isn't that interesting? The women of the Italian Parliament wore jeans in protest, and this movement spread to the Los Angeles region through the Peace Over Violence, a nonprofit violence prevention organization that the commission has supported for many years. We thank you for this important symbolic recognition. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burns. I think every month has to be Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and every day has to be a Denim Day, because this is an issue that doesn't go away, and many of these crimes are not being reported, and therefore is being committed over and over and over again. So we are with you, this council is committed to that, and we have a proclamation that I would like to read for you, and then I will ask my colleagues to come down, and all of us together will present the proclamation to you. Whereas the United States government has declared April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and the Glendale Commission on the Status of Women, in collaboration with Peace Over Violence, has declared April 25, 2018 as Denim Day in the Los Angeles region. And whereas rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment harm our community, and statistics show that one in five women and one in 67 men have experienced rape or attempted rape sometime in their lives, child sexual abuse prevention must be a priority to confront the reality that one in four girls and one in six boys will experience a sexual assault before age 18. And whereas with proper education, there is compelling evidence that we can successfully reduce the incidence of this physically and psychologically damaging crime. And whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month and Denim Day are intended to draw attention to the fact that rape and sexual assaults are serious issues in our society, we're instituted to call attention to misconceptions and misinformation about rape and sexual assault, and the problem that many in society remain disturbingly uninformed with respect to issues of assault and foreseeable rape, allowing these crimes to persist and victim survivors to be revictimized. And whereas prevention is possible when everyone gets involved to increase education, awareness, and community involvement, to take action to create a safer environment for all, and whereas the members of the Glendale City Council strongly support the efforts of the City of Glendale Commission on Status of Women in collaboration with Peace Over Violence to educate people in our community about the true impact of rape and sexual assault and what can be done to prevent it. Now, therefore, I, Vartongar Petian, Mayor of the City of Glendale, hereby proclaim the month of April 2018 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
Thank you. How are you? Good.
What's next, please?
Next is consent items, including Ms. Following a routine and may be acted upon by one motion, any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so. By making such requests before motion is proposed, there was a request to separately consider item 4D.
Right, before we go to item 4D, I would like to move item 8A. 8A?
8A.
Yes.
Is the legislative. 8A is the City Manager regarding Legislative Update of State Bills and Consideration of Three Resolutions of Support. A1 is Motion to Note and File the Legislative Update. 8A2 is Motion to Approve the Legislative Platform Recommended by the Commission on the Status of Women. 8A3 is a Resolution of Support for Proposition 68, California Drought, Water, Parks, Climate Coastal Protection, and Outdoor Access for All Act of 2018. 8A4 is a Resolution of Support for Proposition 69, Transportation Tax and Fees, Lockbox and Appropriations Limit Exemption. And 8A5 is a Resolution of Support for the Reducing Crime and Keeping California Safe Act of 2018. Ms. Beers?
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Christine Powers, Senior Administrative Analyst in our office, has a short presentation for you, and we also have Kira here from Emanuel's and Jones, who's met with you to brief you on some of the items that we are going to be discussing today, but we'll get right into the presentation. Christine?
Good evening, Mayor Garpetian, members of council staff. Christine Powers with the City Manager's Office. Before you is the Legislative Update with several items for your consideration this evening. And as you know, the city's legislative platform was constructed using the guiding priorities of City Council as established in the annual report. This provides a nine-way test of council's priorities that staff can draw from, and also allows our lobbyists to better understand the city's goals. In any cases which a legislative issue is not addressed in the legislative platform but impacts the city, may be returned to council for consideration and direction. The main drivers of the city's position on any given bill typically fall under fiscal responsibility and the ability to maintain local controls. Okay, so currently, there are 20 new bills on Glendale's list since January 2018. The general themes we are seeing is housing and SEQA reform. Now, housing, we just had a considerable housing package passed last fall, and it's barely taken effect, and yet legislature seems to want to continue this trend of housing bills, to continue to impose housing standards on cities in an effort to mandate cities to increase their housing stock and provide incentives to developers and builders. One of the housing bills that's getting a lot of attention currently is Senate Bill 827 authored by Senator Weiner, which Glendale opposes. If you recall, this was also the same author of Senate Bill 35 last year, which was a cornerstone of last year's housing package that approved, created, and expedited streamlined approval process for housing. Glendale also opposed that bill. So as proposed, SB 27 now would allow any project within a half a mile radius of a major transit stop or quarter mile radius of a high-quality transit corridor to be completely exempt from zoning standards for density, floor area ratio, and parking. Housing developments in these areas can range in height, can range in height from five to eight stories depending on the amount of frontage for the property. So on a more positive note, legislators are also working on SEQA reform, and this is after EIRs are certified and cleared to shorten the timeline in which SEQA can hold up in the courts any sort of project. Sacramento Kings Arena was the major impetus for this, so trying to not hold up major projects in the courts. Now, as far as our local representatives have both been busy trying to give cities tools to help address sober living facilities, thankfully, Glendale doesn't have a major problem with this at this time, but as you know, there are things that are out of our hands, and so Senator Portantino is trying to give us the bill that would tie the number of people to full bathrooms, and that would really help limit the number of people that can be in any given home. And then Assembly Member Friedman is trying to pass a bill that would address overconcentration in a neighborhood, so you don't have an entire block of sober living facilities in a given neighborhood. Assembly Member Friedman is also trying to pass two bills that would help address speed limits. One is specifically for our Glendale Rancho area to allow us to consider equine safety when doing traffic and engineering surveys, and thus potentially reduce speed limits. And the other one is statewide to consider accident surveys in passing bills, reducing speed limits, my apologies. As far as the Commission on the Status of Women, they recently recommended four bills for council's consideration this evening, and three of those bills have to do with human trafficking. Two of them have to do with requiring training for employees who come into contact with human trafficking victims in the transportation industry and the hotel motel bed and breakfast industry. One of the bills has to do with imposing a three-year state minimum requirement for certain human and sex trafficking offenses to be completely served within state prison. This is in response to the AB 109, Prop 47, and 57, that is allowing some trafficking perpetrators to be released early. And the final bill for your consideration under the Commission on the Status of Women has to do with lactation accommodation and requiring employers to provide a room and access to a refrigerator and a sink within close proximity for those who need those accommodations. So that is for, that's what we have for the bills, and as far as, there are two propositions and initiatives also for your review this evening. The first of those is Proposition 68, known as the California Drought, Water, Parks, Climate Coastal Protection, and Outdoor Access for All Act of 2018. This will place a $4 billion bond on the June 2018 ballot to fund parks, water, climate, environmental programs. This is typically how parks is funded throughout the state. About every 10 years, there is a parks bond. It's been a little bit over 10 years, and roughly 2/3 of the money will go to build and maintain parks. Glendale will receive a small portion for funding local park improvements, and in addition, be eligible for grants to fund water local parks and any climate resiliency projects. And then the next proposition for your consideration is Proposition 69. This was passed by the legislature in April of last year. It's Assembly Constitutional Amendment 5, which is now known as Prop 69. This was part of the agreement to secure passage of SB 1 last year. That was the $52 billion transportation funding proposal, which is now law. Glendale supported SB 1 last year. What Proposition 69 will do is ensure that the funds that have been set aside and identified through SB 1 cannot be borrowed or diverted by the legislature and can only be used for transportation purposes. It's worth noting that there is a repeal of SB 1 that is currently in signature gathering mode, and some of the language in that also states that any future fuel tax or transportation fees must be approved statewide by the voters. So this is also one. So Proposition 68 and 69, the League of California Cities has asked us to weigh in and lend our support. And the final, I'm sorry. The final initiative for your consideration is the Reducing Crime and Keeping California Safe Act of 2018. Now, this one's a little bit different. It has not been, they have not gathered enough signatures yet to make it onto the November ballot, but if they do, and it looks like they will, they will make it on there. They are currently in signature gathering mode. The California Police Chiefs is asking cities to support this in an effort to really help solidify getting this onto the ballot. This is an aim to fix the unintended consequences generated by public safety reforms mentioned earlier, like AB 109, Prop 47, and 57. And it'll give cities some actual real tools to help address the impacts that we've been feeling over the last few years. It'll reform the parole system to prevent early release of violent felon, and, you know, really redefine what a violent felon means, reform theft laws, and expand DNA collections. So we previously were able to, there's a lot of offenses that were marked down to misdemeanors, things that were felonies, we were able to collect DNA. Once they became misdemeanors, we weren't able to collect DNA. It's a very valuable tool for our local law enforcement, and so to be able to continue to collect DNA for those offenses would be essential. This is similar to the Taking Back Our Communities Resolution that you passed a few weeks ago. This just kind of gives some more teeth to those efforts that cities are putting forward in response to these early release programs. I have with me Chief Povolitis, if you have any questions about this specific item, and Kira Emanuelz from Emanuelz Jones, our state lobbyist firm, is also here to help answer questions on any specific bills you may have. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Questions? Questions?
I have a question and a comment to make.
Councilmember, you're welcome.
Thank you. First of all, I want to commend the Commission on the Status of Women for continuing to advocate for awareness and education on human trafficking. I think it's a really important issue that we've been working on since I was on the Commission on the Status of Women and before. My question is about the AB 2034, Christine. That's the Human Trafficking Notice and Educating, Educating Specified Businesses, Airports, Inner City Rail Stations, et cetera. It seems to me that I remember when I was on the commission that airlines were already doing this. The stewardesses, flight crews were being trained to identify human trafficking victims, and they were actually seeing progress in that, they were actually making arrests. And I thought that was, you know, absolutely one of the major steps in kind of taking the edge off of human trafficking. So this is simply to expand and make that law, because perhaps it wasn't law, maybe it was just a decision that the airlines had made?
Yes, to answer your question, your correct council member, Devine, that was something that Burbank Airport was proactive about and wanted to provide that training, and there are notices that have to be posted for these employees. This just takes it one step further and just requires some level of minimum training for those who come into contact, potentially come into contact with these victims, and yeah, makes that into law.
That's great, thank you so much.
Thank you. I want to ask Chief to come up, please, and explain the, one of the resolutions that it's in there.
The one for Reducing Crime and Keeping California Safe is basically a resolution, we've been before you, before, to discuss the impacts of AB 109, Props 47, and Prop 57. So what this initiative would do is, with respect to Prop 57, I think I've talked to you before about the definition of violent crime and some of the things that are not considered violent crimes because of the section referenced in it. So this will expand the definition of what's considered a violent crime when you're considering somebody for early release, so it will more match, I think, what everybody here on the dais and in the audience would think is a violent crime. So that would limit the ability to release that. It also requires that the parole board then take into account not only the offense for which the person is in prison at that particular time, which is what the current law is, but would say that they would have to consider the person's entire history before determining whether or not they should be granted parole and put back onto the streets. On Prop 47, it makes a couple of minor adjustments. One is with thefts, we know, especially in our commercial retail areas, we have people who commit multiple thefts, and right now, anything under $950 is a misdemeanor. That was a change that Prop 47 made. And no matter how many of those you commit, they continue to be misdemeanors. So what this would do, based after you're at the third theft, if it's more than $250, it would make it fileable as a felony. And so basically, that's geared at dealing with some of the serial shoplifting where we have people that make their living from committing, from committing those crimes. And so it brings that into there. The last part, as you all know how valuable DNA is, because we have our own DNA lab, is there were certain felonies for which we collected DNA samples, and those were used, those were put into the state's database and used to check samples against. When those were dropped to misdemeanors, we're no longer able to collect those samples. So this would basically, without changing the status, the crimes that were dropped from felonies to misdemeanors would remain misdemeanors, but it would reestablish the ability to collect DNA for those crimes that were previously felonies and we were collecting it before Prop 47.
So it would give you some more tools to fight the crime after what happened with Prop 47?
That's correct. It would give police departments, it gives us a little bit more in the way of the tools, especially for dealing with serial theft and for being able to use a scientific basis to catch those people who are serial criminals.
Any questions? Not for the chief, but for Christine. Okay, thank you, Chief. Christine? Christine, last year, the legislature enacted a package of about 15 new laws related to housing. This year, I think they're going for more, right? Some of the examples, you spoke about housing bills, and my question is, are they And my question is, are they backing it with funding? Are there funding mechanisms behind this that are going to help local authorities, municipalities to actually implement what it is they're trying to get us to do?
So good evening, Kira Ross, on behalf of Emanuelz Jones. So last year, you're right, they did do a package of 15 bills, and that included two major funding bills, SB 2 and SB 3, a housing bond and then additional $75 real estate transaction fee bill. They are not doing any direct funding this year. That said, there are a couple of different proposals that are out there. One of the proposals would allow cities to do what are called EIFDs, or Enhanced Infrastructure Financing Districts, in areas that are looking at doing some of the low-rise, we talked about SBA 27, to fund those kinds of projects. And then there are about three other proposals on the side that are really directed at homelessness but do get some funding towards affordable housing. And those funds, one of them is on your legislative calendar, SB 912 by Senator Bell. It's a $2 billion proposal. Some of those funds would go towards affordable housing proposals and get, in a little bit of a sideways way, get to some of the issues. But unlike last year where we had very direct and specific funding, the funding this year is going to be a little bit from the side and may or may not help. The 912 funding is going to come directly through HCD, so it's going to come through existing programs or the Housing Community Development Department, excuse my acronyms. But those funds will come through HCD and they will come through existing programs today. And then there's a second one, it's not a bill, it's a proposal by the California State Association of Counties that would also look at some funds that would go out through existing lines of funding.
So since you're here, let me use the opportunity to ask you a more global question. So from time to time, we have the land or the resources to do a low-income or affordable housing project. And as we sort of experienced in the last four years going through one of those projects, it's a very tedious process, in great part conditioned by the fact that there are numerous local authorities going for the same tax credits from the state. And, you know, we go for it, sometimes we get rejected, sometimes we don't. It's hard to get there, and that's conditioned by lack of funding for these types of projects. For that kind of thing, the conventional approach to creating affordable housing, is there anything out there that's new? Are there mechanisms that are going to increase the pot of money that fund these types of projects? Whether it was last year's bills or this year's?
Right. So there is, there was SB 2 from last year that there is funding through No Place Like Home, and then there are some, there are some funds that will be coming out through Housing Community Development, and I can get you the details off the top of my head. I'm a little rusty on some of the funding, but there are some funds that will continue to come out that help with some of the planning. I don't know that it's going to necessarily extend things like tax credits, but there are some different mechanisms. One of the challenges on affordable housing is the complexity of it and that it's just, these aren't cookie cutter projects that happen. But I would look to some of the bills from last year that really did attempt to get at some of the funding issues. This year, we're not looking at a lot of those issues in reality. We're looking at streamlining and trying to move these projects as fast as they can get out the door.
So these bills look at how to force us to streamline our processes, right? As opposed to, okay.
Yeah, the main bills that are out there this year in housing really do go towards streamlining.
I assure you that, at least from what I've observed, our process, as tedious or as difficult it may be, is a minuscule portion of what's holding up these low-income housing projects. At the end of the day, again, it's the funding, it's the money. It's not, our administrative process, I think, can deal with it fine. But I understand that, you know, maybe other cities are much more difficult to deal with, and the state obviously deals with everyone, not just us.
Also, most of these bills are not geared towards providing affordable housing, they're geared towards housing in general, and that's the problem. When they want to take the local control away, and like Senator Weiner's bill that we are opposing, and they're trying to take the local control away and you can build anything and everything and get around the process, that is a problem. But as far as funding goes, there is not much out there at this time, none of these bills are providing any funding for affordable housing, so.
Yeah, not compared to last year when there were really some direct funding bills.
Councilmember, Devine?
And this SB 912, the bill, was a billion dollars for housing, but it says re-referred. Does that mean that it was, it was brought up last year, but now it's again, I mean, is this, this is not a good thing to be re-refered? How many times does he bring it up before it?
Yeah, councilmember, re-refered actually refers to the referral process. It's a very technical measure, technical maneuver that happens in the legislature. It was probably amended and re-refered back to the committee. And all that means is that the bill is in the policy committee, in the legislature, it was amended, and then anytime you amend it, it has to go back to the same committee it came from. Because they, when you amend a bill, you look at, do the amendments change the referral? Does it need to go to a different, different policy committee? So it's of no consequence to the nature of the bill. These large homelessness and housing bills, there's two or three of them, they are all moving forward slowly. The legislature has until April 27th to look at all of the fiscal bills, so they have not, they've had a few hearings and they start in earnest on Monday, and we have about 2,000 bills to get through in the next four weeks, so.
That would include 912.
It will include 912.
So maybe you can get, you can get back to us and let us know how that one's coming along, because that's a billion dollars that.
It's important. Yeah, it's a lot of money.
Yeah, actually, a few weeks ago, we were at an advocacy trip in Sacramento and through Skaghi, and we met with Senator Bill and Bell, and he is really pushing for this 912 to go through, and hopefully it will get done. And he's really a huge advocate of affordable housing projects, so hopefully it will get done. And they need our help as well to get our constituents to vote for this, because when they come up as a ballot measure, so.
Okay. Any more questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So this is a.
I'll move to note and file.
Note and file, okay.
Second.
Thank you. Do we need a roll call for this? Yeah, roll call, please.
Councilmember Zagajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Garpetian?
Yes. Now going back to consent items.
Also for the other, the rest of the items as well?
We also need a motion to approve the legislative platform recommended by the Commission on the Status of Women.
Second? Roll call, please.
And the rest, I'm sorry. So it's two, three, four and five.
So moved, all of them. Second.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Zagajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Garpetian?
Yes. Now 4B.
4B is Director of Public Works regarding Designated Underground Storage Tank Operator Services. B is Motion Authorizing C Manager Tech Security Professional Services Agreement with TRC Solutions Inc. for two years for $216,240 plus $10,801 or 5% for contingencies for a total not to exceed amount of $227,041 with an optional one-year extension of $108,120 plus $5,406 or 5% for contingencies. Two is a resolution appropriating $18,020.
Councilmember Sinanian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Simple question, it's a sizable contract, I'm trying to understand what process, if any, went through and how the money's going to be spent.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. Councilman Sinanian, I'm going to ask Shay Eccleston, our senior public works manager who worked on this item, to provide a brief presentation for your benefit.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Garpetian, members of the city council. I'm Shay Eccleston-Bower from the Public Works Department, and I'm here to give a brief presentation on our underground storage tank program. Glendale has underground storage tanks holding diesel and unleaded fuel at 12 facilities throughout the city. These tanks are highly regulated by the State Water Control Board because fuel leaks and spills are harmful to the environment. The city, as the owner of the underground storage tanks, must assign a designated operator who is responsible for the inspections, training, record-keeping and reporting for each underground storage tank facility. The motion before you is to authorize a professional services agreement with TRC Solutions that will assign this consulting, consulting firm as a designated operator for our underground storage tank sites. The city released a request for proposal in January 2017 for designated operator-related consulting services, and staff ranked TRC Solutions as the highest of the three firms that submitted proposals. They are familiar with the city's underground storage tank inventory and thus uniquely qualified to take on this substantial responsibility.
Was that a request for proposals or for qualifications?
It was a.
It was a request for qualification.
Okay, so that's, that's what I thought it was.
Sorry about that.
Okay.
The proposed agreement is for two years at $108,120 per year plus 5% for contingencies with an optional third year. And with that, I can answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Just my question is, why do they rank higher than everyone else? What are the, what are the criteria that were considered?
Well, that particular RFP process was actually handled by the city attorney's office. They were the, maybe the city attorney can provide some additional information on that, but essentially, they were able, they were the most qualified for, to provide these services.
Essentially, yeah. Our staff looked at it in conjunction with Public Works, and that was a determination that they, they had the most comprehensive ability to provide the service.
Can you go through some of the criteria?
I cannot, and I apologize, my staff member's not here.
Can I ask if this is the first time we've ever done this? This is the first time?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Members of city council, councilman Sinanian, I can, I can tell you in my conversation with the city attorney's office, the main reason was that the breadth of experience and their familiarity with the city of Glendale's underground storage tanks and sites and the requirements of the regional water quality control.
Right. The primary consultant for this particular contract has about six years of experience, and the subconsultant who will be doing most of the field work has about 40. So they're high, they have a vast understanding of the regulations here in the state of California with the water board, and it was that experience that caused them, caused the city attorney's office to choose them as the highest-ranked.
Okay. I mean, I understand they're very experienced, and that sounds very impressive, but I'm just going to make sure that whoever else applied wasn't more experienced. So if there could be some indicators that they had less experience, that less expertise, that less clients, I understand that these guys have a lot of clients, too. I mean, that would be very helpful to me, and it's all I care about, to make sure the process that this went through.
Sure. And I think what we can do in subsequent reports, Mr. Sinanian and members of the city council, is to make sure that we include that piece in the report so that you're all aware of the criteria that staff utilize to analyze their decision-making process. Absolutely good questions. We can, we can include that in the upcoming reports. Our apologies for not having the exact answers this evening. And to also answer Councilmember Devine's question, this is the first time, because we typically have done this in-house, and it's important for us to move forward with this item in terms of having a consultant do the work for us just based on previous issues that we've had in terms of compliance that we've dealt with in the past, and so we are here before you to ask for approval of this item.
Right. And I totally recognize the need for these services and for this contract to, to be completed. I just, in this form, I'm just going to abstain and not vote for the contract. But we need this contract, it needs to be, I mean, whoever ends up with the contract, someone has to, someone that has the professional skills and is the best that has applied for the, for the position as a result of the RFQ, so.
Okay. Is there a motion to move 4B? I'll move the item. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Zagajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Abstain.
Mayor Garpetian?
Yes. Would you please read 4D into the record?
Certainly. 4D is Director of Public Works regarding Approval of Final Map of Track Number 73764 for a five-unit condominium subdivision at 2700 Piedmont Avenue. He won his resolution improving the final map of track number 73764.
Thank you. I have one card, Mr. Grant Michaels.
Good evening, Mayor, council and staff. My name is Grant Michaels. While I am involved in many organizations, I'm speaking tonight as an individual. I see this project from my bedroom window and have been involved with this project from its start approximately eight years ago. I've attended every public hearing on this project and am continuing that today. At the start of this project, at the very first variance hearing, I spoke expressing my opposition to the third residential story that was taller than anything in the neighborhood. And at that variance hearing was told, the variance hearing dealt only with the variances, and another hearing would address the third story, the mass and scale. When I spoke at the design review board, I was told the variances were already approved for the third story, therefore, those were essentially approved. I'm just continuing to speak at every hearing, and given the adoption of the North Glendale Community Plan, changes within the planning process, I believe now the DRB has taken authority to address issues like this. I'm simply speaking today to ensure that this problem doesn't happen again, that there are hearing bodies that will take responsibility and authority to address all aspects of a process. I fully expect that the issue before you is simply the track map, not the design, not the mass and scale. But again, my intent is to make sure that this type of problem doesn't happen again in Glendale. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Michaels. Is there a motion?
I have a question from, I'm sorry, from, this is, has been done on February 3, 2016. So can I participate in it?
You mean the tentative map was approved in February 2016?
It's on February 13, 2016.
Yes.
Tentative map for.
Yes, this is a hearing on.
I can participate?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is not even on the approval of the final map, which is a separate approval from the approval of the tentative map, and you are all entitled to participate regardless of when, when the tentative map was approved.
Okay. Any more questions?
I'll move the item.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Zagajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Garpetian?
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item on the agenda is city council and staff comments.
Comments?
Councilmember Najarian?
I would like support from the council to place on the agenda a report discussing the feasibility of giving a free transit day on our B-line system in honor of Earth Day. Earth Day is April 22nd. It's a Sunday. I'm not sure many people would be able to take advantage of the free transit on Sunday, but I hope that someone from Public Works could suggest an alternative day as well as the fiscal impact. We want to encourage people to take transit as much as possible, and inviting them onto our B-line system in honor of Earth Day may be a very good move on our part. But wait, is there a second for that?
A second.
Thank you. There's more. I was going through my desk the other day, and I have about 30 Metro TAP cards. These are the cards that you can use to access the metro system as well as any of the municipal systems in LA County, including our B-line. So this is a refillable debit card. our B-line system in honor of Earth Day may be a very good move on our part. But wait, is there a second for that?
A second.
Thank you. There's more. I was going through my desk the other day, and I have about 30 Metro TAP cards. These are the cards that you can use to access the Metro system, as well as any of the municipal systems in LA County, including our B-line. So, this is a refillable debit card, if you will. You merely need to call the number on the back and open the account, and you can recharge it as need be. So, I have about, I don't know, 30 of these. If anyone is interested, please see the clerk. If anyone in this room is interested tonight, please see the clerk. We'll distribute them, and afterwards, if there are any left, we'll leave them at the front desk of the Management Services Department, and it's a good way to get acquainted to the TAP system. Thank you.
Do they have any money on them?
There's no money. However, they are sold for $2 in the machines.
Oh.
We couldn't load these with money, because it would be a gift of public funds. But the cards are available, and you can get on your way to enjoying the transit system in LA County. You can also use them to rent bikes in Pasadena or any of the bike-share locations throughout the county.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmembers.
Would you like one, Mr. Mayor?
I would love one. $2 is $2. I would never say no to anything.
Thank you, sir. Pass this on. Here you go. Are we done? $2? Okay. Councilmember Sanayan?
Yeah. So, last Saturday, our City Hall hosted... The parking lot outside hosted a electric car guest-drive event, through which, I guess, the city's trying to promote zero-emissions technologies in our own personal automobiles. It was a lot of fun. The cars were not provided by dealership or anyone like that. It was individuals who had brought their cars and who were sitting in on the nice little loop, two, three-block loop around City Hall, and allowing for interested individuals to experience an electric car, how it feels, what it drives like. And we had the most luxurious of cars to the most economic versions of them. And I think every car was pretty much reserved throughout the day, throughout the event. So, there's a lot of interest, and a lot of folks kept coming out, and the thing was very well managed. There were never backlogs of individuals trying to get in. So, good event. I hope some of you made it and had a chance to drive these cars.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sanayan. Councilmember Zagajanian?
On April 10 meeting, we will discussing the certification of Grayson Final EIR, and I am very worried. I'm reviewing it. Previously, I suggested to have a project with 100 megawatt of renewable and 100 megawatt of gas, a new gas generation, in addition to Unit 9 at Grayson. What would be the process in having a project of 100-megawatt renewable and 100-megawatt new gas generation in the final EIR and Francif that can be discussed and studied? Unit number nine was placed in service in 2003, which we want to use it. And once it reaches the useful life, we can replace it as well by renewable energy. But for now, I'm very concerned about suggestion, the project which I saw so far, placing 250-megawatt of new gas generation, which is replacing it with 1970s and 80s technology. It bothers me, because what we are doing is that technology, which we're gonna use. Energy industry has changed. We are not meeting our obligation, in my opinion, by just changing with gas generation units in Grayson I'm talking about. If we put only gas units, it'd really be a very strange situation. I can imagine 30 years later, people will look at it and say, who were those City Council members that accepted in 2018? By the time we finish the project, it would be 2021 or '22, and they put gas generation units back to operation. And that's why I'm very, I mean, worried. Energy industry has changed, and it's changed a lot. So, complete consideration of all options for the final EIR is crucial. And Siemens, who are the company which we will provide these units even, they laid off 6,900, or they are in process of laying off from the gas generation unit, that factory, they will lay off 6,900 employees. And General Electric is doing the same thing. There is moratorium to use this system in lots of other cities. They want to see what's going on. I'm not in agreement to have all this, like, renewable energy or use renewable energy at this time. This process started 2014. I came here beginning of 2017. So, I don't want to go back and say I'd like to see all the process to be done through renewable energy, but I just want to be reasonable. And my suggestion, of course, is we rely on 100-megawatt of gas generation, 100-megawatt of renewable energy, and Unit number nine, which has been in operation for a while, hopefully, when it comes to the time, we will replace it with another renewable energy. So, little by little, we will go away from gas generation. That's my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Zagajanian. If there are no more comments, I have few speakers' cards, three minutes each. Mr. City Clerk, would you like to read this community event announcement?
It's the community event announcement portion. There's a couple of cards submitted for community events announcements, as well as any individual who wishes to forego their five-minute public comment portion, they can speak at this three-minute portion.
Okay. First speaker is Randall from 540 West Broadway, followed by Lieutenant Oscar Rodriguez, followed by Margarita Bagdasarian.
I'm scared. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, staff, everybody. My name is Randall Vuchus. I'm here with Joe Palasano, Camille Levy, and Alice, board member, board president, vice president for Wellness Works. We're at 540 West Broadway. We provide counseling and healing services for veterans and their families. We're here to talk to you tonight about an upcoming event that we have called Not on Our Watch. It's a three-day vigil. This year will be from September 12th to the 15th, and we're bringing it back to the city of Glendale. I'm a Glendale native, I went to Lincoln Elementary, fire explorer with the city, background in emergency services for LA County, and United States Air Force Special Operations Command for a couple of years. The purpose is to raise awareness for the veteran suicide rate, which right now is at about 22 a day. So, one over a little over every hour. City of Glendale has approximately 5,000 veterans. We are here to raise awareness and solidarity and show support and bring resources to the veteran community, as well as awareness and to the city of Glendale. We are asking for any cosponsorship or support from the city. We would also love, Mr. Mayor, for you to be on our honorary committee. We would like to show that the post-traumatic stress, sexual assault, which the speakers before us have brought attention to, that these things are not mutually exclusive to the veteran experience, that they are things that transcend military and civilian life, to show that we're not as far apart, and to kind of bring that integration back. That is our main goal. We have some pamphlets about what we do. We're currently serving about 50 to anywhere to 150 veterans per month at our facility. We have monthly barbecues, and it also extends to veteran family members as well. Counseling, acupuncture, onsite mental health, and we also have access to jobs and other things like that. So, that is essentially why we're here. Just wanted to say we're coming back and looking forward to it, and any support from anybody is much appreciated. We thank you all for everything that you do for the veterans as a whole, and we would like to start paying it forward and reach out to the community as well.
Thank you. Thank you very much. When is this event going to be?
September 12th to the 15th.
Where?
At Verdugo Park, in front of Glendale Community College, using the pedestrian bridge.
This is the fourth year?
Yes, sir.
Because I participated all three years, last three years.
Yes, sir. I remember.
I spoke last year, and it was in Pasadena.
Yes, sir.
I'm glad you brought it to Glendale this year. I would be honored to be on the board.
Thank you very much, sir.
And keep up the good work, and thank you for your service, because this is very important. As you mentioned, 22 a day is just mind-boggling. It's unbelievable. So, we do everything we can from our side to help, so...
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
I'd just like to say that this is one of the most emotional efforts to raise awareness of military suicides that there is. It's a beautiful event. How many people have you... How many vets have you had participating in the last few years? Because you have to have volunteers, like, on every hour, on the hour.
Yes, ma'am.
So, how many have you had in the past?
We are getting anywhere from, as far as volunteers goes, anywhere from...
200 to 300. Come in, walk in.
Yeah, we have anywhere from 200 to 300 veterans come to the event usually, but as far as volunteer support, usually about 50 people that are volunteering. It's a very core group, and, you know, it's a gritty fight, but it's one that needs to happen.
Well, I'm very happy that you're here in Glendale now and not in Pasadena, and I hope that there's some way...
Happy to be home.
Hopefully, there's some way that we can help you out.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Next speaker is... Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Zagajanian. Please don't go away.
No, that's okay. I just wanted to say, this should be called planning ahead, because this is in September, right?
Yes, sir.
That's great that you're informing us way early. Thank you.
We're trying. Doing our best. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Apologize for leaving before I was dismissed.
No worries. I'm not gonna apologize. Lieutenant Oscar Rodriguez, followed by Margarita Bagdasarian, followed by Albert Rosstamian.
Hello, everyone. Thanks for allowing us time to speak. Oscar and I are here to present an upcoming car show, Cars for Cops and Kids, held at Verdugo Park on May 6th of this year. The project is presented by Glendale Rotary Noon Club, and the presenting sponsor of the project is Pacific BMW. They were generous enough to be the presenting sponsor, number one, and they wanted the community to know that they have a city employee promotion in place for all city employees to receive significant incentives off purchase of BMWs.
Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council, thank you so much for allowing us to speak again. This is, as we were here a couple of weeks ago promoting this event as well, it's a great event. We're benefiting the Glendale Unified School District Healthy Families Program, benefits kids that are suffering from homelessness and at-risk. We're also benefiting the Glendale Police Foundation Teens and Police Partnership. These are at-risk programs that we've created at the Glendale Police Department, targeting kids that are kind of going sideways. We want to save them before they get into the criminal justice system, so we spend time with them. We are running this program during the school year. This year, we've already run two classes. We've graduated 60 kids. We're gonna start another cohort coming up at the end of the month. We're gonna graduate another 30 kids, and then we're also gonna benefit the Glendale Teen Academy, where we spend times with our youth in the summer times when they're out, and we bring them in, we show them the benefits of public service, and showing them what it takes to be a public servant, and hopefully get them incentivized to join our Explorer Program and our Cadet Program. So, these are all worthwhile programs that we're benefiting. I'm a proud Rotaryer, and I did have a hand in nominating these programs. I see the benefits firsthand, and my team, the Crime Impact Team, our school resource officers, are very much involved, and we're very proud to present this very worthwhile program for the city of Glendale. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next speaker is Margarita Bagdasarian, followed by Albert Rosstamian, followed by Monica Campagna.
Good evening, Mayor Garpetian and council members. My name is Margarita. I am the Community Outreach Director at the Armenian National Committee of America Glendale Chapter, longest title ever. I'm here today because we, along with the Glendale Police Department and the Glendale Fire Department, are going to be hosting a recruitment session slash informational session this Saturday, March 31st, at 2:00 PM at the Glendale Youth Center. So, it's for anybody who's interested in a career in either the Fire Department or the Glendale Police Department, and if you're a high school student, you're welcome to attend. If you're a politician looking for a career change, you're welcome to attend. Again, that's going to happen this Saturday, 2:00 PM at the Glendale Youth Center, which is at 211 West Chestnut Street, right off of Central. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Albert Rosstamian, followed by Monica, followed by Ruth. There is no last name.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Albert Rosstamian. I'm a member of Armenian Convention right here in Los Angeles. Would like to take this opportunity to thank all of you for unanimously voting to rename section of Maryland to Artzach. And in the past, Councilmember Aranjad suggested we should display a plaque, information about Republic of Artzach. However, we believe that something very important is missing from the process, and that is the Freedom Fighters, who paid the ultimate price for the liberation of Artzach. Furthermore, we cannot forget their sacrifice, bravery, and patriotism, which enabled us to win the war. We suggest that, along with the plaque, we should add the names of our heroes who gave so much in order for Artzach to have its independence. I would like to read some of those names, please. Montemelconian, deceased. Leonid Asgadian, deceased. Tatul Karpayian, deceased. Ashad Gulian, deceased. Petros Revondian, deceased. Jiar Sefilian, who is a political prisoner right now. Ari Khandoyan. Pavlik Manukian. Arkady Tertatavosian. Shahen Mevrian, deceased. Wigen Zakalian, deceased. Gagik Stepainen, deceased, and many others. As you noticed, there are few names who are actually alive, but most of them are jailed by the illegitimate regime of Sersakisian. Thank you for your consideration. Would love to hear your feedback.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Monica, followed by Ruth, followed by Kate Unger.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you for allowing me time to speak tonight. I'd like to read you an article from 25 years from now. Glendale's Renewable Energy Path and Inspiration to the Nation. I'm only gonna get through part of this tonight, but specially poised with its own utility, still and citizens that were willing to fight for their vision of the future, and a group of forward-thinking council members, Glendale proved itself a leader 25 years ago, becoming one of the first cities in California to replace its dependence on fossil fuels. In 2018, Glendale City Council had admirably guided this jewel city to 47% renewables portfolio, but they faced a big decision. They needed to replace their aging gas plant while maintaining reliable service and continuing to meet state renewable standards. They realized that simply replacing their aging plant with a new one, no matter how much more efficient, would not solve the problem. "It was really tough," said one council member, "because we knew we needed to get it right. We had to balance the need to meet demand with the urgent need for cleaner air and reduced CO2 emissions. We wanted our clean energy portfolio to go up, not down, and we didn't want to invest in anything that would become a stranded asset a decade down the road." So, when prepared to rush along plant... When pressured to rush along plans to rebuild and expand the plant, they said, "Not so fast." They wanted more options and proposals that would have the very least amount of gas in their energy portfolio. They knew that investing a half-billion dollars in the Grayson Plant would leave them out of options later to invest in locally-generated renewables for the 30 years into the future. Not content to accept the information gathered for them by StanTech, they chose instead to invite a group of independent clean-energy specialists to offer advice. They worked out solutions that would decrease... out solutions that would decrease pollution and CO2 emissions for generations to come. The city became a shining example of how people can use multiple tactics to piece together creative solutions where others may only see confusion. They ramped up their energy efficiency program, matching the zeal of LADWP and Edison. Their goal, to help homeowners achieve greater efficiency, one light bulb, one efficient appliance at a time, changes of one to three percent for household, brought their load down considerably. Another change, "The old Grayson site, thank God," said twenty-five-year-old Your Kid's son, who lives across the way from the former plant. "They could have just chosen to build a huge gas plant here, but now we wouldn't even be able to use it anyway. Instead, I see a high-tech battery storage facility built with batteries that were not using child labor, per Mr. Najarian's request. Tesla was happy to comply. Instead, I see a high-tech battery storage facility here on San Fernando Boulevard with solar panels above. Sure, they did modify and keep a few of those turbines going. Thank you." I will stay tuned for the riveting conclusion of this two-part series next week with more suggestions from me, your local resident, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. That was great. Thank you. Ruth, followed by Kate Unger.
Good evening, Mayor, honorable members of the council. My name is Ruth Kwan. I'm here with my three-year-old son and my six-year-old daughter Neva. I am here because of the proposal to repower the Grayson Power Plant, located less than a mile, I'm sorry, pardon me. I'm here because of the Grayson proposal. My son attends Disney daycare less than a mile from the, from the power plant. Also, I grew up in Glendale. I attended Glendale Public Schools, including Edison Elementary, which is within two miles from the Grayson Power Plant. Like all kids, my kids, called her Neva, love to play outside. Like all parents, I want them to breathe clean air. I want them to have the best chance of avoiding respiratory diseases and asthma. We want other kids to have that same opportunity. Therefore, I respectfully request that the city take a long pause, a deep breath, if you will, to consider ways to decrease, not increase, air pollution in Glendale. Buying greenhouse credits does not decrease air pollution for Glendale kids. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Kate Unger, followed by Charlie, I'm sorry, I cannot read your last name, followed by the last speaker, Dee Molina.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. My name is Kate Unger. I'm here to speak about the Grayson Power Plant. I'm a resident of Palonconee, and I'm also a CEQA attorney. I want to start by expressing my appreciation for you. You work hard to foster the well-being of the city of Glendale and its residents, and I'd like to thank you for taking on this hard job, and thank you for taking the time to listen to me. What I want to talk about is the difference between the alternatives analysis that was done as part of the Grayson Environmental Impact Report and the study of renewable energy options that residents have been asking for. Staff has told you they've already looked at alternatives to the Grayson Project, and that's true, but the problem is that the word "alternative" is being used to refer to two different things. Here's the crucial point. The EIR did the analysis of project alternatives required by CEQA, but alternatives for CEQA purposes doesn't mean alternative in the sense of alternative forms of energy in place of polluting fossil fuel energy. CEQA's requirement is simply for the EIR to discuss a range of reasonable project alternatives that could avoid or substantially lessen any of the project's significant environmental effects. The alternatives will vary based on the type of project, and most of the time will have absolutely nothing to do with alternative energy, or maybe better put, renewable clean energy. For the Grayson Project, if you've had a chance to look at the EIR by now, the EIR analyzed five project alternatives, but it only considered one alternative energy project alternative that used renewable energy sources. Contrast that with what residents have been asking for, an independent study by one or more clean energy experts that doesn't take the repowering plant as the default, but instead looks at potential renewable energy projects on a clean slate. That study would still have the objective of meeting Glendale's power demands reliably and without breaking the bank. It would consider multiple potential options to meet that objective using renewable energy sources. The whole point of getting that study is to have a robust set of renewable energy options or alternatives that you can look at and weigh along with the Grayson Project. The alternatives in the EIR don't accomplish that. Without learning about clean energy alternatives, you would be committing to a $500 million gas power project without ever having looked at all the facts. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Next speaker is Charlie, followed by Dee Molina. Please pronounce your last name for me.
It's O'Handlon.
I'm sorry?
O'Handlon.
O'Handlon, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm here to talk about this, the Grayson Project again, and specifically about this pamphlet that was sent out by GWP recently, and it's touting how great this Grayson Expansion Project is going to be. It's a really slick flyer, basically, and it's a PR piece promoting this project. And my question is, why did they send it out now? It includes a letter from Steve Zurrin calling the brochure informational, but it isn't informational. Basically, it's propaganda. To me, it would have made a lot more sense if I'd have received something about this before they started, because now I hear this is too late to change things, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, which seems kind of ridiculous. You know, we as taxpayers, taxpayers are the ones who are on the hook for doing this, and as you stated, the energy business is changing, and it's changing dramatically and all over the world. And in this country, a lot of cities are switching to renewable energy. It's not an idealistic utopian notion anymore. It's the reality of the future. So, you know, if we have to pay for this, I think it would have made a lot more sense that it was put to the public that we have a choice, because we do have a choice at this point. We don't have to just go along with whatever GWP decides. We're the ones who pay for it. They're not a private company just doing whatever they want. They're a public utility, so they actually answer to you, and it's basically your responsibility to act on the public's behalf to make sure that they do what's in the public's best interest. The way that the EIR was conducted, to me, seems very self-serving to GWP. It doesn't seem like it was done in a, you know, objective fashion at all. It doesn't seem like it really considered with any realistic interest anything alternative to what it wanted to do. So, you know, that's what I really wanted to come up here and say. You know, I told somebody earlier that I was going to come up and talk, and they said, "Don't waste your time. Politicians only respond to money or fear." But, you know, sitting here in the meeting and seeing that, you know, you're actually a very concerned group of people, and that you do listen to what people are saying, I hope that you consider that rather than rushing this thing through, the majority of people that I've talked to are not in favor of this going through, the public. Even more surprising, most of them had no idea. A lot of them hadn't received this flyer, and much more of them had no idea that it was even going on. So there's a great lack of knowledge among the public about this project, which is going to have a very, very, very deep impact on all of us. Anyway, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Last speaker is Dee Molina.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, honorable council members, my name is Dorothea Molina. I live in Glendale. I am troubled about the Grayson repowering plan. One, especially for those who live close to Grayson. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, yes, we can.
Four members of my family live within one-half mile, and I'm not very far away. In October, we were told the plan is to do environmentally sensitive work at night to minimize negative effects on residents. But that is when most people are at home and open their windows, not to breathe air pollution from dust and fumes from construction. And I understand asbestos covers a large portion of the site. Two, failures, whether from miscalculations, cost-cutting, inferior materials, or acts of God result in tragic accidents. Last week in Florida, a bridge fell down. Closer to home were the Highway Bridge fire while under construction east of Los Angeles County, Torrance Refinery frequent mishaps, and catastrophic gas leaks at Eliso Canyon, the biggest leak in U.S. history. The less we rely on hazardous fuels, the safer we will be. Incidentally, on Monday, the expansive reading spa, excuse me, reading spa in the newly renovated Glendale Central Library was closed due to water damage from the rain. Three, funds should be dedicated to needed transmission expansion, not burning more fossil fuel. Four, this is the last one. Half a billion dollars will cost us more than we currently pay. I'm not a CPA nor financial prognosticator, but neither is whoever wrote page twenty of the Grayson Project overview. The tooth fairy might believe its quotation. There is no projected cost impact to our customers, but you and I should not. I am not an expert, but I have common sense and a wealth of experience from years of paying attention. We who elected you believe each of you has common sense, integrity, and a devotion to the good of this city. Mr. Mayor, you and perhaps others objected to rallies where hundreds who live or work in Glendale met to express their objections, am I out of time? No. Okay. To express their objections, reservations, or concerns about the original Grayson proposal. But those rallies were peaceful and respectful of this council and its staff. And with ninety people requesting to speak at your official presentation meeting, how else could they be heard? How could they demonstrate they were real, not just signatures on petitions or letters? I thank you.
Great timing. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Next, I would like to move up item seven B to take a vote on that, because this is a...
Sure. Seven B is an ordinance approving and authorizing a lease of real property located at 1728 Canyada Boulevard to the Verdugo Woodlands Dads Club, Inc. This was introduced by Councilmember Najarian on March 13th, 2018.
Najarian?
I'll move the item, Mr. Mayor, a second.
Go call, please.
Councilmember Al Ghajani?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Garpetian?
Yes. Next item, please, seven A.
Next item at seven A is adoption of ordinances. Seven A is urgency interim ordinance prohibiting issuance of entitlements and/or permits for residential development projects, including residential mixed-use projects in downtown specific plan area, introduced by Councilmember Najarian on March 13th, 2018.
Ms. Beers?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, we're going to go to Philip Landsafame, Director of Community Development, to re-remind us of the item that we discussed two weeks ago. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, two weeks ago, you asked us to, you considered two things. First was a host of revisions and a real thorough look at the downtown specific plan. You asked us to look at anything from the incentives to changing the way we calculate density, to a inclusionary housing, which is already underway, to a traffic impact fee. And you directed us to go study that, and we will do that. We indicated that study to do, all of the things that you asked us for, would take about a year, but we will present different aspects of that as they become available. The second question that was posed to you was, should we have a moratorium while we're looking at those aspects of the downtown specific plan? That was introduced, the ordinance before you was introduced. A couple of features of that. It is, it relates to any residential project within the downtown specific plan area. It exempts or excludes those that have already received their discretionary approvals, design review, CEQA certification, variances, or parking modifications of some kind. So with that, the question today is, would you like to move forward with that forty-five-day moratorium that is included in the ordinance before you today that was introduced two weeks ago?
And thank you. With that, do we have any comments, questions from council? Councilmember Sinani?
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, I think at the last meeting, I needed some clarification whether we could differentiate between types of development or the sizes of development and in the way that this moratorium applies to ones and not others, whether that kind of differentiation was possible at all, or if it could be legal, and if so, how it would be structured.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Members of council, Councilmember Sinani, and I think the questions that came up the last time were, for example, could we differentiate between owner-occupied units and rental projects, and then could we distinguish, could we exempt projects, for example, of a certain size, maybe forty or fifty units with the numbers that were suggested? As to the former question, you know, very difficult to make a finding differentiating between rental and ownership, because the projects have the same, we are, if the council adopts this moratorium, it's going to be doing so on the basis that it believes that additional projects that would come online while the council's studying changes to the DSP, that those additional projects are going to have impacts to public health and safety and then the public welfare. And there really isn't a difference in terms of the impacts that an ownership project will have versus a rental project. As for a differentiation or an exemption for a project that's under a certain size, again, our concern is based on those findings that we have to make, that the council would have to make. We are, we are basing this moratorium that the council goes and adopts it on the fact that in the DSP EIR, we studied a certain number of residential units. We are closely arriving at that threshold, and on that basis, the council would be saying, in essence, we want, before we go over that threshold, we want to, we want to do some additional study. And by exempting projects, for example, that would, might be forty or fifty units, such a limitation, such an exemption could call into question the moratorium, because there, if you had, for example, a number of projects that were under that threshold, you're still, you're still causing that impact by virtue of the fact that you're approving certain projects of a certain size. And so that's our concern. There's no established case law on that, but our concern is, we don't really have a way of measuring which projects are going to have an impact and which ones aren't, other than to say they all are.
Surely, we can agree that a project that has two hundred units in it is going to have a much bigger impact than a project that has forty units or fifty units.
I agree, although some projects, depending on where they're, where they're located within the DSP, are going to have less impact based on, for example, how close they might be to the freeway. There, there's going to be a variety of factors to determine whether or not a project has a significant impact, for example, on traffic or air quality. And so that, that becomes the concern. You, you, you are differentiating on project size, maybe something de minimis like five or ten, but when you start to get anything above that, you're really, it's, it might be difficult to justify in court a moratorium that is saying okay to some projects and not others. We have in the past adopted interim ordinances where ordinances that meet certain development criteria are okay, because those are the criteria that the council is studying in any event. But we've, when we have adopted these interim ordinances or these urgency ordinances to restrict certain uses, we haven't in the past relied, and then again, there's no case law to say this is okay and this isn't, but I do have to urge a caution in that regard, that because of the fact that we're identifying the DSP EIR as the threshold that we're about to cross, differentiating between a project that's, say, for example, forty units, we are saying any more units above what we're, where we're at in the DSP is going to have a significant impact on public health and safety. And, and I just, I do get concerned about exempting projects under a certain size, especially if there are multiple projects of that size that come in with, into, into play while the council's studying changes to the DSP.
If a, if a moratorium is in place, does that leave council with any discretion to exempt certain projects and allow them to move forward? Is there such a legal mechanism to employ with the moratorium in place?
Well, first, as noted, the moratorium on its face only, will only apply only will only apply to residential projects or mixed-use projects with residential component. Again, there is not a lot of law defining what sort of additional mechanisms can be used to exempt a certain project. Again, I think the real quandary here is, if you're going to exempt a certain project that might, in the future, comply with future regulations, that might be one thing. But we're really at the infant stage of studying what those changes might be. It's difficult to say, okay, this, we're going to allow some discretionary project whether a process, like through a development agreement process. It might be difficult to look at that. It's something we can look at. For example, if the council's inclined to go forward on the moratorium when we bring back the item that we have to come back to you 10 days before it expires or no later than 10 days. Something we can look at a little bit further if that's the council's desire. But again, the government code provision, which authorizes the council to adopt a moratorium, you know, talks about uses and projects and not, you know, a specific-sized project. And that's sort of the issue that we're trying to deal with in crafting a moratorium for you that meets the government code provisions.
So we have for now.
Thank you, Councilmember...
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, you know, it's my intention that this moratorium stop all new development. I question, however, how about an adaptive reuse of an existing shell of a building? Something similar to the Masonic Temple, where there's no additional building being done, but it's the interior that's being changed from a commercial use into a residential use?
Maybe I can look at that while we're asking other questions.
Because that's a thought that I have, and I feel that that type of... If you're not changing... The building's already there, but you're just changing what you're doing inside it. And especially if the use is a less intensive use, I would think that, to be fair, that that should be permitted. We're not building anything new. We're making what is there now a less intensive use than was prior.
That would be something we can think about that. Again, I probably would advise, if the council's inclined to look at that, that we can discuss that when we bring back the extension.
After 45 days.
Yeah, after 45 days. Again, part of the issue, though, is we talked about using the DSP as the threshold that we're about to hit. So if you're... Even if you're doing adaptive reuse, you are adding additional residential units, understanding that that project might have less impacts than in existing use.
Okay. Questions?
Councilmember Agajanian?
How this going to impact, you know, the state is considering wherever is like transportation stations to... You know, like they will have... There'll be rules and regulations they're considering not to stop the cities to build transportation stations. How that rule going to impact this, our moratorium?
Are you referring to SBA 27?
Right.
So I think Ms. Powers referred to it earlier. That statute, you know, I guess the question is not how our moratorium would affect this, but how that statute will affect our zoning and a moratorium in general. And my understanding of it, my reading of it, is that will preempt us in regards to any project that is subject to 827. So any project that's within a quarter mile of any transit stop within a major transit corridor, and then any half-mile of any major transit stop, which is pretty expansive. When you look at the definitions, how that applies in Glendale. So if any of those projects are by right projects under SBA 27, they will trump not only our zoning, but also this moratorium.
But considering, let's say, entire Colorado Pacific Central brand, they are all...
My understanding...
They'd be exempt, the way it appears to me, Glennows. They're a major transportation hub.
Councilmember Agajanian, the way it's currently written and drafted, you're absolutely correct. Those... All those projects that are within either a quarter mile or half mile, depending on the definition of those transit stops, are going to be exempt from our zoning as long as they're either 85 feet in height or 55 feet in height, depending on the width of the lot. Which is why we're posing it.
Okay. If there are no more questions, I have several speakers' cards. I would like to go to the public, then come back and talk some more and come up with an idea tonight. First speaker is Lorraine Mohill, followed by Mike Mohill, followed by Roland Kedikian. There's always a first time for everything. Mr. Mohill, come on up. We usually say ladies first, but this time gentlemen first.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Mike Mohill. Councilman Najarian's request for a 45-day moratorium is his attempt to redeem himself for his years approving about 90% of all development in the downtown specific plan and outside the DSP. We need more than a moratorium. We need to downzone our entire city. We need to immediately stop spending city resources and reject the South Glendale Community Plan. Our house is full. We do not need an additional 10,337 additional residential units and an estimated population growth of upwards to 27,000 residents. Councilman Najarian voted for the beginning and end stages of development of the following: Elaby Lofts, Lemley Lofts, Legendary Towers, Verdugo Gardens, Lexon Orange, Brand Apartments, Louise Hotel, Aloft Hotel, and Indigo Hotel. Additionally, Mr. Najarian has approved Stage 1, allowing for the foundation of a building, and Stage 2, allowing for the framing and architecture of a building, but voted no for the final Stage 3. By voting no on the final stage, Councilman Najarian could always tell the public he voted against a project, and we've become a great, 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 great hero. Example where Councilman Najarian voted yes for Stage 1 and Stage 2, but voted no on the final stage of development are the following: The Atlanta, Camden, Campus, Harrison, Lexon Orange, The Pacific and Broadway Project, Glendale Apartments, and Citibank Project. From the get-go, the clever and deceitful Councilman Najarian always wanted those mega apartments complex to be built. If he truly did not want them, why did he vote yes for Stage 1 and yes for Stage 2? Mr. Najarian knew perfectly well that behind closed doors, there were going to be four council members voting for the project, to approve that project. Councilman Najarian and his council colleagues enjoyed the power they have over architects, staff, and the public. If council were really concerned about unattractive buildings, council should have a design review board approve the projects and not politicians like our council members. Having council members act as architectures is like politicians acting as judges. On the TV program, America's Got Judges. Or, should I say, America Has Talent.
Thank you, Mr. Mohill. Next speaker is Lorraine Mohill, followed by Roland Kedikian.
Good evening, everybody. I would like to say one thing. I was a little concerned about something that came during the election. There was a flyer that was circulated, Mr. Najarian's flyer, and it said, "Who voted against these projects?" The Atlanta, the Harrison, Lexon Orange, Pacific and Broadway Project, Camden Glendale Apartments, the Campus, the Citibank Project. When you last ran, sir, you claimed on all these buildings, you had voted no. It says, "Who voted against these projects?" again. But that's not really how I understood it. When checking with the office, the city clerk's office, the minutes, I was told that on Stage 1 and Stage 2 of all these projects, you voted yes. But somehow, on Stage 3, you voted no. That didn't make any sense to me. I feel that that's misleading to the public to say on these projects that you voted no because, again, I'm reiterating myself, why would you vote yes on 1, 2 on... Yes on Stage 1, yes on Stage 2, but the final Stage 3 vote no? So I believe it's deceiving. And the only thing I would ask you to do is, going forward, please stop, Mr. Najarian, deceiving the public. Thank you.
May I ask the speaker if she supports my motion for a moratorium? Thank you.
Roland Kedikian, followed by Maria Leodro, followed by Priscilla Cardea.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Roland Kedikian, Glendale resident. And I am here to support the adoption of a moratorium. I hope you would. I live north of the DSP and I work south of the DSP. And I travel it often. And as a parent, I travel it more than once to go pick up the kids, check up on them. Today, I delivered lunch to them. So today, by the end of today, I would have traveled up and down about six times on this DSP. And every time, there's traffic, unfortunately, and the frustration just builds. So previously, I had looked at the goals and the purpose of the DSP. And I'd like to just kind of remind you of them, see where we are, where we were, what we were trying to do, and where we are. The first one was to provide a framework for responsible growth. I don't think 6,000 apartments with no path of ownership is some sort of a responsible growth. The second one was perpetuate a powerful physical image promoting the city's regional identity. Our image is traffic. Ask anybody outside of Glendale, they'll tell you, "Traffic." They see cars, no buildings, nothing else. Ensure downtown's long-term status as a good place to do business. It is a good place to do business once you get there and find a place to park. Encourage excellence in design and quality of craftsmanship to enhance the downtown environment. Developers pulled a fast one on us. I don't know how you can build 6,000 apartments in such a short time and still claim you did great craftsmanship. Strengthen downtown pedestrian, bicycle, and transit-oriented characteristics. Apartment buildings that are being done are not for families. But people who work in downtown are parents, mothers, like myself, who have to travel up and down. Bicycles and buses is not an option. Attract a wide range of activities, maintain a dynamic atmosphere, and there's a picture of a tree. And you look at that DSP plan, there's plenty of pictures of trees. There's more pictures of trees than there's actual trees in DSP. Provide incentives to a wide range of downtown housing types. Expensive apartments, that's the wide range of housing types we have in downtown. Expensive apartments. Present development regulation in a user-friendly, easy-to-follow manner. This we got it. It was so easy, these developers managed to put in 5,000 to 6,000 units in very short time. Preserve and enhance distinct character of downtown buildings. Central is just a nice canyon. I don't know what character there is. Anyways, I don't mean to point out all these negatives because I know we can do so much better. And the downtown specific area is only 15.5 acres, and the entirety of Glendale is 19,840 acres. I know some of it is just mountains and what have you. But that's 0.07% of the land that you are being asked to put a moratorium, so I encourage you to do so.
Thank you. Maria Leodro, followed by Priscilla Cardea,
Hello, members of the council. And my name is Maria Leodro. And I moved in Glendale in 1960, when Glendale was the jewel city. I don't feel it's the jewel city anymore because it's so crowded and there's so much traffic. So I'm here to ask you not to give permission to build the apartment right... I'm in 215 North Kenwood. So those apartments are going to be built right in front of us to shade our building, our pollution, and the traffic as it is now. So I ask you to consider that, and I thank you very much.
Thank you. Priscilla? Followed by Steve Edleton, followed by Violet Coker.
Good evening. I ask that each member of the board to please approve the moratorium. I do live at 215 North Kenwood Street, which is off of Wilson. I'm asking regarding the GUSD apartment project across from where I live to approve the moratorium on the building of this. That's the 285 units to be built. I feel that it would impact my health, safety due to increased traffic, increased air pollution, increased parking shortage, delayed emergency services of paramedics, fire department, and police officers due to potential increased traffic. It's difficult as it is. I can walk to the Glendale Gallery and get there faster than driving my car over there. Now, if you start building the 285 units, it's almost impossible to get your car out of my unit. It takes me longer to get out of Glendale just to drive downtown Los Angeles where I worked. It would allow myself 20 minutes more just to get out of Glendale. Once I'm out of Glendale, I'm easy breezing down LA. It's just getting out of Glendale. With this type of construction, it's only going to make it even worse. Please, consider the moratorium. Please approve it. Thank you.
One quick question for you. So LA has less traffic than Glendale?
It's just... It's just the way it's been constructed. I can get down there... Once I'm out of Glendale, I can get morning traffic. I can get down there in 20, 25 minutes. It's just getting out of Glendale because the morning traffic is pretty considerable.
Thank you. Steve Edleton, followed by Violet, followed by Ally Jones.
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers and staff. I want to recognize the staff. I work for the state and the county of staff. I know how hard they work, and they are the consistent voice of the government for us. And I want to show you my notes because I'm going to speak from my heart. I'm a 38-year resident here, and I'm appalled at this downtown development. It's not only ugly, it is crowding the streets. And now I hear, not only are we going to have more residential units with fewer parking spaces taller than the code calls for and open spaces as courtyards. That's just insane. We don't have enough parks yet for our residents that we have. What are we going to do in the future? What I look for is vision. I would... I challenge you. Drive down Central, close your eyes. Now drive down San Pedro between 1st and 2nd in downtown LA. They are identical buildings, and they're awful. And this just simply is not the vision that I would have imagined we can do here. We can do better. It needs more than a moratorium. I can't believe I agree with Mike. It's got to go... I'm sorry.
Too bad he's left.
Too bad he did. Yes, it needs to go beyond that. Vision, revision, please.
Thank you. Next speaker is Violet, followed by Ally Jones, followed by Niri Sukbatian.
Good evening. My name is Violet Coker, Public Affairs Representative for the Carpenter's Contractors Cooperation Committee. We are a labor management organization comprised of the carpenters' union and signatory contractors. For the past 30 years, we've helped local, state, and federal agencies and the community ensure contractors do not violate labor laws. We actively monitor subcontractors for workers' rights violations, including wage theft and payroll tax fraud. That being said, we urge the council to continue the process of examining and improving the DSP's development standards. These mixed-use projects in Glendale have become a hotbed for cheating subcontractors, creating a higher prevalence of poor con... creating a higher prevalence of poor construction in Glendale than all of LA County. Many of these subcontractors are under investigation or have had legal enforcement actions taken by the state of California Labor Commissioner for labor law violations. Mr. Mayor, as you said two weeks ago, we all want responsible projects. We believe hiring these cheating subcontractors with little regard for workers' rights, safety, quality jobs, and quality construction is not responsible. We support the council's effort to improve policies that lead to responsible development projects in the DSP and the Glendale community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask the city attorney, can you make any comments about what she's saying? Do you have any, any information about cheating?
I have no information.
No.
Yeah, nothing I could comment on.
No knowledge of any of that. Okay, thank you.
Nothing that I can comment on. Next speaker is Ali Jones, followed by Naira Sokbatiyan.
Thanks for having me. So, council, I urge you all to vote yes and support the moratorium. Okay? To stop the entitlements, the incentives which will protect our community from the disastrous effects of those mega developments. So if you just do a simple Google study, you'll see that Glendale routinely ranks amongst the nation's top dangerous cities to drive, and the danger compounds for pedestrians and cyclists. So we also have the highest insurance rates, and this is based on insurance data, DMV data as well. So take the Allstate study that compares the top 200 U.S. cities drivers most likely to get into an accident. Well, Glendale ranked 195 out of 200, and over the past 12 years, we've been consistently at the bottom of that ranking. So 83%, we're 83% more likely than the national average to actually get into a collision. If you look at the 2000 or the most recent data from, analyzed by the Office of Traffic Safety, Glendale also ranked 51 out of 57 cities, with populations between 100 and 250,000 for collisions that resulted in fatality or injury. So, and that's with alcohol involved. So at the end of the day, listen, I urge you all to support the moratorium. Okay? At the end of the day, for everyone's public safety, and for the betterment of Glendale. So that's it.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, next speaker is Naira Sokbatiyan, followed by Rodney Khan, followed by Bee Waters.
Good evening, dear council members. My name is Naira Sokbatiyan, and I live next to downtown. To begin with, I would like to thank Councilmember Mr. Najarian for proposing this moratorium, and I truly hope that this will mark the beginning to reverse the trend of overdevelopment in Glendale. I urge you to approve the moratorium, since there is plenty of required finding of adverse impacts on our public health and safety. The EIR of the DSP found that upon reach of 3,980 units in the DSP, the impact on traffic would be significant and unavoidable. We are way past that number of units already. The draft EIR of the South Glendale Community Plan states that even with the increase of 3,000 units in the entire South Glendale, we will suffer seven significant adverse impacts on our health and safety, including poor air quality, pollution, greenhouse gas emissions, shortage of police and firefighters, traffic and transportation. Hence, continuing such mega developments will certainly hurt Glendale community on many levels. The dramatic increase of traffic caused by exceeding density carries an adverse impact to our health in view of air pollution, smog, and we inhale all of this. Poor air quality and pollutants cause asthma, lung, and kidney problems, even cancer. The dramatic increase of traffic is also a safety issue, because the response times for fire protection are already below the national standards, and the presently understaffed police will take longer to respond to emergencies due to traffic. Traffic increase and parking shortage also cause enormous stress, which weakens our immune system and makes us susceptible to various illnesses. The list of those illnesses is long, includes heart problems, high blood pressure, stroke, heart attack, ulcerative diabetes. Disproportionate traffic increase as in downtown Glendale also increases the likelihood of car accidents and pedestrian fatalities. Those mega developments produce greenhouse gas emissions and thereby are bad for our health. And most importantly, they are not giving any benefit to the community, but those problems and astronomical rents. So to finish, I urge you to put the public interest before the interests of developers, and to reverse the hazardous trend of overdevelopment in Glendale before it's too late. Please vote yes on the moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you. Rodney Khan, followed by Bee Waters, followed by Grant Michaels.
Good evening, mayor, city council, and city staff. My name is Rodney Khan. My offices are in Bran Boulevard, here in the city of Glendale, and I have a little different perspective than what you've heard this evening so far. In my opinion, there is no reason that this city council needs to adopt a moratorium. None. Any changes that the city council would like to make, whether it be impact fees, traffic impact fees, inclusionary housing, has been done and could be done without a moratorium. Development standards could change without a moratorium. The DSP incentives, eliminate, modify, do whatever you wish, can be done without a moratorium. For many, many years, in fact decades, I couldn't recall the last time the city of Glendale had a moratorium. There's been changes to the zoning code, to the building code. There's been impact fees, such as parks' impact fees, other development impact fees. All were adopted, all went into effect, all without a moratorium. The timing of this, your staff has mentioned, 45 days it goes into effect. Nothing of substance can be accomplished within that 45 days. It will have to be extended to the 10 months and 15 days for a total of one year. It was mentioned, we could hire more staff, or we can set the priorities. The reality is, even if you did, it takes a considerable amount of time to evaluate this, to study it, to analyze it. And for the items that were listed in the staff report, those are some of the items that can be addressed in a very quick, timely manner without a moratorium. We all want responsible development. We all look at this and say, we can't time the financial markets. We don't know if a delay of a year, two years, however long, is going to impact construction financing. We don't know that. I certainly don't know that. But what we do know is, is that if we have projects right now that are on the table, that are proposing affordable housing as a component of their project, it's been said time and time again from this city council, affordable housing is a priority to this council. I completely agree with that, and I believe that you wholeheartedly believe with that. And I think the developers, on their dime, with their financing, or building the units themselves in highly desirable areas in the downtown, which we haven't seen, can build those units. I'll conclude my remarks. I just have two questions real quickly that I can put out there.
Is rapid, though, because I still have several more.
Absolutely. The two questions that I had from clients of mine, one, is there, would the moratorium impact certification of the city's housing element? And two, is there any consideration for the pipeline status for projects? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Bee Waters.
Sorry if you couldn't read my handwriting.
I'm sorry, man.
Good evening, council members. My name is Brian Waters. I'm the president of the Chester House HOA. We're located at 234 North Kenwood Street, which is a couple blocks away, and across the street from the proposed GUSD development. I'm on behalf, I'm on half, excuse me, I'm here on behalf of our 30-unit building. Some of our owners and tenants are here today, and we vote for the moratorium for a number of the reasons that people already mentioned, whether it be health, traffic, and whatnot. We see absolutely no downside to moving towards a moratorium, just to spend that extra time to review planning and whatnot. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Just a quick comment. You, sir, you realize that the moratorium that we're contemplating today does not apply to your area? It will not cover...
Right. As I understand it, though, the GUSD project, they're asking for a rezoning to include our area. Is that not correct?
No.
No.
No, it is.
Yeah, no, they are asking to rezone that property to DSP.
As DSP.
As DSP.
There you go.
Mr. Mayor, clarification. That was the proposal that went before the planning commission. The planning commission rejected it. They have since withdrawn.
Okay, so I'm talking, yeah, I'm talking post-planning commission.
Thank you.
Thank you. Grant Michaels, followed by Lucines Sokbatiyan, followed by Lily Amirian.
Good evening again. My name is Grant Michaels. I am speaking as an individual. I do support the moratorium, but more importantly is the study and looking for solutions for the impacts. With the release of the South Glendale Community Plan EIR, we are well aware of the potential impacts. I'm looking and appreciate the effort brought forward to study the impacts of the DSP, look for solutions, and that is my interest. Thank you.
Thank you. Lucines Sokbatiyan, followed by Lily Amirian, followed by Eva Gaber, followed by Leonard Davitian.
Hello, good evening, council members. My name is Lucines Sokbatiyan. I've been here, a resident in Glendale for over 15 years, and I own several apartments. I am here to really request if you could please approve the moratorium, and the reasons are, as mentioned by different our community members, the building of several apartment complexes, mega buildings, will increase the pollution. Obviously, it's not healthy. Also, the increase in traffic, risk of accidents, decrease of parking slots is not healthy. It's very stressful dealing with it on a daily basis. So I'm here to request if you could please approve moratorium, and please say no to mega buildings, considering our safety and health concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and honorable council members. I live in downtown Glendale, near downtown Glendale. My name is Lily Amirian, and my family, as all Glendale residents, suffered the adverse impact of all those mega developments, residential development in and near downtown Glendale. As a result, very accurately mentioned by other speakers, health, health and safety hazards, air pollution, but I want to talk about, not that much about police response and firefight, the fire protection, but about the ambulance. It's a little emotional. I was thinking to talk about that or not, but decided to tell. Recently, my friend's family had a very bad tragedy. Forty-five-years-old household, head of the household, had a heart attack, and ambulance was very late, and that guy passed away waiting for an ambulance around 40 to 45 minutes. It was rush hours downtown Glendale, and the paramedic said if they could be earlier, then he might be stay alive. So I just wanted to tell you that it can happen to anyone. We are not protected. We can't think that that fire will not happen to us, that that crime will not touch us, but the diseases are not just, we cannot be guaranteed from get sick, from getting sick. And that can happen to anyone sitting here, to our parents, to our families, and I'm just asking to consider a moratorium, to vote yes for the moratorium until incentive, incentives to decrease the development will be taken. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time and consideration.
A quick question for you.
Yes?
You said the ambulance was, took 45 minutes for the ambulance to get there?
Yes, yes. It was, it was rush hours.
When was it?
It was a couple of weeks ago, two, three weeks ago.
And what part of, just an approximate area, what part of Glendale?
To be honest with you, I don't know. He's my friend's relative.
I find that very hard to believe, to 45 minutes for the ambulance to get there.
Ambulance was unable to go through the traffic, because all the cars will stand.
Couple of weeks ago, you said? Couple of weeks ago?
Two, three weeks ago, yes.
Okay, thank you. We'll look into it. Thank you very much.
And Mr. Mayor, for the record, as you know, the average response time for EMS calls in the city of Glendale is three minutes and 52 seconds. And as you said, we'll look into it. I've never heard of a time where it has taken us 45 minutes to get to a paramedic call, but we will, of course, look into it and see if there was anything in the story.
Yeah, we all know traffic is increasing, increasing everywhere, but 45 minutes for an ambulance, it's very hard to believe. Anyways, we'll look into it for sure. Next speaker is Eva Gaber, followed by Leonard Davitian.
Hi. Good evening. Hello. Hi, thank you for all being here, too. It's a long evening with all of us here, and I would encourage you all to vote yes on this moratorium. And specifically, I am born and raised here. My parents came here in 1954, so Glendale history, the Verdugos, the parades down Bran Boulevard, I don't know if any of you remember those, but I certainly do, and I used to even wave to President Ford when he visited here in Glendale. Let's see. My issue here is, of course, the mega buildings and so forth, anything over three stories high, but the promise of a few low-income housing units to suffice the deep pockets is really not fair to the residents of Glendale. These big apartment complexes for apartments, 6,000 apartments I'm hearing, those are transient-type people. They're not people that are here planted in the community for roots, that have roots, that love Glendale. They're not those, the type of people that are going to fight for Glendale, like we all fight for Glendale. Who's here that is an apartment dweller, I'm just curious, versus homeowners that are here fighting for our city? So I'm just saying, when you're thinking about the architecture, when I go here, when I'm out of town, I'm different places, and I hear back about Glendale, oh, Legoland. It's Legoland. That's insulting to me. Legoland, my Glendale is turning into Legoland because of the cement block buildings? You know, look at places like Carmel, or, you know, Spanish-style, I mean, Camarillo, whatever we want to look at. You know, what is our architecture? What do we want our future? What's our vision? So I'm just saying, you know, instead of like these great big high-rises and, you know, everything else, we have the power here to really make something special for Glendale, and let's really consider what, what is it to make it something special, and not suffice, and not get into those deep-pocket builders that control what we want. Let's, let's make a plan, and let's do it right. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's my last card. Good evening. My name is Leonard Davitian. I live nearby. I am for this moratorium, and I think it's long overdue. It should have been in place a long time ago. I think you guys worked for developers for a long time, and it crossed the boundaries. It was supposed to, the open was supposed to stop on Maryland Avenue. It went further west, south, this way and that way, like the building which replaced the apartments that replaced the Circle City Building, and then one next to it on corner of Louise and Broadway, and then YMCA buildings, and then hotels here, hotels there. There's just too many. Should have stopped this open a long time ago. If you want to have a good residential area, decent residential area, without traffic or parking problem, then should have stopped this, all this project a long time ago. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any more cards, Mr. City Clerk? No? Okay. Thank you. That was my last card. So, questions, comments?
Um...
Councilmember Divya.
Yes, can we get an explanation about the pipeline projects and how they're going, they are addressed in the ordinance, please? and how they're going, they are addressed in the ordinance, please?
Uh, Councilmember Divine, the, the way it's drafted now, it would, the moratorium will not apply to any project that has received all of its discretionary land use title was necessary to construct the project. That's, that's the way it's worded now. And, and it doesn't have to be that way, but that's the way it's presented, because it's, that's how we typically, typically start it out.
All right, thank you.
Comments, questions?
Well, do you want me to, why, let Mr. Najarian start, or do you want?
Well, I, I said a lot last time. Mr. Eccleston, if you think it's weird you were agreeing with Mr. Mohill, I'm agreeing with Mr. Kadekian on this one. So...
Did you get that on the, on?
Politics and the strange bedfellows, but, but what he pointed out was exactly true. The, I, I'm the only one here who voted for the downtown-specific plan, and it was a vision for the downtown area of Glendale, looking out thirty years. When the, uh, when we passed it in two thousand and six, it was more or less like a, a planning document, a planning exercise. Things were very quiet for about three or four years. And then, all of a sudden, things started. And yes, I did vote for several of those early projects. And it was rather unique. We were rather excited on the city, on the council, on staff level as well, that we were getting a lot of interest in our downtown that had been stagnant for a decade or more. It was rather exciting. One project, two projects, three projects. Then, you know, we started to realize that this is not just a few one-off developers coming in, but it was a, almost like a land rush to downtown Glendale, partly due to the great success of the Americana, which opened in two thousand and eight. And that was a great project, great residential, and folks along Brand and Central realized that they could market and match the rents that the Americana was charging, because they were so adjacent to the Americana. But things started to get out of hand. It was developing too quickly. This was a thirty-year plan, and we were filling out our, our dance card in six or seven years. It's at that point that I started to express some resistance. Nevertheless, we are where we are right now. I think it's time, and it's the opportunity for council, to take a control of the destiny of downtown, of our Glendale. And let's make sure that all the things that the residents who came here to speak about are being performed. We're talking about parking. We're talking about traffic. We're talking about public safety. We're talking about design. We're talking about setbacks. We're talking about, don't throw a few measly, low-income units and get an extra floor on your building. That's not what we want. We can do better. And we should all be demanding the very best, the very best. And it's not to punish the developers. They put their money and their hearts on, as an investment at stake. We want Glendale likewise to be the very best and to be the very successful city that we can be. Now, some say, well, it's too late. You know, the cows are out of the barn. But no, it's not too late. There are, there are wolves at the door, ladies and gentlemen. The question was put, we don't need a moratorium. There are wolves at the door. There are developments in the process that will dwarf anything that has been put on the paper that is being built or proposed as of this moment. Trust me on that. That's why we need a moratorium, to stop it. Because if we take that year that it would take, potentially, to adjust our standards, those guys are gonna slip right in and are gonna say, sorry, I made it home, you know, you touch home base, you're free. No. We have to put the moratorium in. We let, we need to let the developers know, in clear terms, what we expect from them, in terms of the quality, in terms of all the other items that we talked about today and last, and, and two weeks ago. And this is not a bad thing. This is a good thing for the city of Glendale. Let's do it right. Let's make it the very best that we can and, and try and, you know, as, as a representative of the city and of the residents, try and bring the very best products that we can to the city, and we'll be a much better city for it. I think this step is a very modest step forward. We still have some questions. There was a question raised about the adaptive reuse, and maybe that question will be answered within, it was unfair to drop it on the city attorney. I'm an attorney too, I know how these things go. So maybe we can get a, a better thought out, a bit of advice from him going forward. I'm hoping, though, that things that are less intensive, that aren't building new structures, we'll be able to, to continue, to move forward. And I urge my colleagues, let's do the right thing, and I don't think any of us will regret it by voting for this moratorium.
Thank you, Mr. Najarian. Councilmember Divine?
Okay, well, um, I've, I've listened to the concerns of our residents regarding the, the building of these residential mixed-use buildings downtown and the DSP, and, and I've seen for myself that in spite of our earlier actions, and we've tried, council has tried to reduce or eliminate incentives, the remaining incentives still produce residential projects that fail to provide significant public benefit and instead are creating negative impacts in the DSP and surrounded areas, things like traffic, parking, density, poor design. I agree with all of you. And in view of this observation, I am convinced that it is important for council to consider comprehensive updating of the standards and the incentives that we are using right now in the DSP. We have given staff direction, told them what we want them to look at. Now, if we don't go forward with the moratorium, then this will give developers the opportunity to file or, or get projects approved during the time it takes staff to do the studies that we're asking them to do. And so I think the best way to prevent further proliferation of non-compliant projects, which create negative impacts in our downtown, to enact this proposed moratorium to be in effect until the DSP revisions are approved by council. I am, uh, I have always been a proponent of, of let's take a breath, things move too fast, there, let's see what the impacts are. I think this is gonna give us a chance to, for staff, to look at this, give them forty-five days to get started on these, um, suggestions that we've made, questions that we've asked. So I would be in favor of the moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Najarian? Councilmember Sinanian?
Sure, I'll go next. So there, you know, we, I think we spoke about this plenty at the last meeting, and clearly there are concerns by the residents, there are concerns by council members, including me. I'm just not sure that this is the proper way to deal with it, because it seems like we're applying a, a solution that is too broad and, and, and too over-inclusive. Surely there are wolves at the gates. I, I agree with you, there are. But there are also responsible individuals who want to do good things for Glendale, and they will be impacted as well. I was hoping that the city attorney's office would be able to craft language for this moratorium that would be more narrowly tailored and more refined and would differentiate between types of developments, depending on size, or whether it's rental units or, or owner-occupied units. But from what I understand, that's impossible.
Certainly with respect to differentiated on ownership and rental, I just, I don't see any basis. The others are very, very risky, because again, you're relying on the, the impacts that project units are having beyond the thresholds that we're, we've, we've hit on the DSP. And that's, that's the uncomfortable part of it that we, that's the, that's the part of it that we feel uncomfortable with.
Right. And we've asked staff to basically do a thorough analysis of all the components of development that are involved in DSP and bring it back to us. And staff has informed us that'll take them about a year. Okay, that, that's a year's worth of time, during which we're, we're basically telling the world that you can't do anything in downtown Glendale anymore. I don't know if in the long term that's well thought out. Again, there has to be a way to use a fine tool as opposed to a sledgehammer to deal with this issue. Right now, we're, we're talking about a sledgehammer. One thing about Glendale, I know that a lot of people say, oh, you know, people talk about Glendale and Legos. Honestly, people talk about Glendale throughout L.A. County with awe. They, they love Glendale. People, Glendale is a spot, it's a destination, something that it wasn't ten years ago. Ten years ago, folks on the West Side didn't know what Glendale was. Now they come to Glendale. They come to, to spend their weekend, to spend their money in Glendale. It's, it's, it's a happening place. It's exactly the impact, the effect that the council back in two thousand and six wanted to achieve when they adopted the DSP. So let's not, you know, say bad things about Glendale. It's, it's an amazing, wonderful place. Is it a sleepy bedroom community of the nineteen forties? No. It's not. There are neighborhoods in Glendale that are still sleepy bedroom communities, and great. It's awesome. I live in one of those, I love where I live. But I also love coming to a vibrant, energetic downtown Glendale. We have, we have a real downtown. Is there more traffic than there was fifty years ago? Yes. Partially because those people fifty years ago allowed for the, the tram to be dismantled. And our public transportation is haphazard. I mean, not because of anything we're doing, just because of regional problems and the way that trans, mass transit has been treated over decades. More traffic? Of course. In a city where people want to do business, want to live, people want to come for entertainment purposes, of course there's gonna be traffic. In those cities where there is no traffic, usually there's no economy. They're, they're dead places. We don't wanna be the one of those. So, let's not throw out the baby with the bathwater, okay? We have an awesome city, an awesome downtown. Architecturally, things could have been done much better, much better. Setbacks, the, the aesthetics, the open space, the green space, the standards that we applied could have been done way better. No doubt about it. And these are things that we need to look at much more attentively from now on. But to say that, oh, we've created this monstrosity that, that somehow is the end of the world for the residents of Glendale is just not genuine. Back to the issue of the moratorium. In its shape, in its form, in its all-encompassing manner in which it's being presented today, I cannot support. I, I don't think it's going to be productive for Glendale in the long term. It's a feel-good moment, I know that we'll say, yes, we will stop those wolves that are at the door, who are not responsible developers. But this isn't just that. This is stopping everyone. The wolves, the sheep, the rabbits, the lions, you know, human beings too. So, um, I, I cannot support it at this time in this way. I, I hope that we, you know, I don't know how, what the vote is going to be like today, but if it passes, you know, that's regrettable. If it doesn't, then I hope that we can look into this further and refine it to the extent possible and revisit it in the near future.
Thank you, Mr. Sinanian. Councilmember Sinanian, Councilmember Najarian?
I lived in Glendale for approximately thirty-eight years, and I'm troubled by the direction of this city. While ago, city was going crazy by making these buildings that surprised everybody. You know, we have six thousand units, whether it's built or it's in the pipe to come. And now, all of a sudden, we wanna stop everything. So why we don't take a more reasonable, slower approach? And why is it that we wanna stop residential units and not commercial units? I don't understand. What's the difference? That residential units should be punished, but commercial units can be continued. The residential units, at the time when they were building these, all these buildings around us, they all, I'm a professional engineer, they all are cheap buildings. I mean, they just, there are no quality building in Glendale. I tell you, very few maybe. And all of a sudden, we have all these units, and now we wanna go from here, all of a sudden, we dive to the bottom of the pool and see. So we don't wanna do anything. And as I said, my question again is why there is moratorium on residential and not commercial buildings? So, I have to learn still, maybe. Business centers or business buildings, they can continue, but those who are willing to do residential units, which is more beneficial to the general public to leaving it, which we have problem. If we have more residential units, probably will stop, you know, the rent to go higher and higher every day. And I'm still, having said that, I'm, go along with moratorium, but temporarily, like forty-five days to study. So not just stop everything, to see what we get from our staff, will they know better, to look into it. So, that's my comment.
Thank you, Councilmember Najarian.
Well, I, first I wanna tell you that I love our city. I love my city, I love Glendale. It's, I traveled three, four countries in the last six months, and everywhere you go after a few days, you miss home, you miss Glendale. So I wanna defend my city. This is, a few, few weeks ago, we had a, uh, brokers had a, had an open house, and, and CBRE had a, had a session over there. And they said nowadays Glendale is sexier than Pasadena. This was never been said before. Glendale is a better place to live in, shop and play and live and work than any, any other place. It's the four safest cities in, 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 in the state of California. The traffic is there. And I'll tell you one reason. My family, for example, there were two drivers. When we moved here, my wife and myself were driving. Now, we have four drivers. Two of my kids started driving. And a few years later, we're gonna have five drivers, because families grow organically. Yes, the traffic is increasing, of course, but it's increasing everywhere. It's not just, just zoomed in in Glendale. And I, I don't believe this idea of Los Angeles having less, less traffic than Glendale. I, I go to downtown L.A. once, uh, once or twice a, a month to attend a meeting at nine o'clock. I have to live at seven-thirty to get to downtown L.A. on Wilshire Boulevard by nine o'clock. Sometimes I'm late. Am I correct or not, Councilmember Divine? We go together sometimes.
Glendale is further, you have to drive more.
It's eight miles, it's eight miles. And sixty thousand people come to Glendale every day to work, and consider that. And the reason that Councilmember Sinanian was indicating, that, that last mile, when they come to our train station, that last mile, we don't have that streetcar that hopefully we will get to it sooner than later. They have to either drive, take an Uber, or take a bus to come to Business District. The concerns that I have today, I had the same concerns last year, three years ago, five years ago. And these are everything that you, you, the public are indicating. The, the parking. Parking is a huge issue. Because if you don't have enough parking in your development, that creates the traffic in the rush hour. Because when you come home from work and you have a one-bedroom and there are roommates living in there, because the rents are really high, then you have, one of you has to park on the street, and that's when they start driving around the neighborhood, residential neighborhoods, to find a, uh, place to park. So that's one of the issues. The not having density limit in downtown-specific plan, that is one of the issues that I have. The incentives that were given to have a commonly publicly accessible open space of a thousand square feet, you can get ten times more building and one more floor. That's one of the issues. The adaptive reuse was indicated, I think we need to look into that. So where, where I'm going with, with my comments is I'm willing to go to forty-five units, I mean forty-five days, and look into the adaptive reuse, bring some information back. There are so many questions that I think can be answered before that forty-five days. As well as look into SB thirty-five, which was passed last year. I, I thought it didn't pass, but it passed last year. And see what the effect of SB five would be compared to what we wanna do today with the, with the moratorium. The other problem that I have with a more full-blown moratorium for a year is it will stop developers from building family units. And one of the issues that I had with the developments that went through, they were all very small, because there is no- all very small, because there is no density limit, you have a certain, an envelope, a box, that you can, if you can park it, you can build it. So most developers built as many units as they could have, and that's what made those units very small, 600 to 700 square feet or what have you. And they were not built for families. And my issue always been, build something for people of this city. Build something that families can use today, and our children can use in the future. So, again, the architectural, this was the vision when downtown-specific plan was approved. Since I was elected from 2015, this council has not approved one mega-development residential mixed-use project. Not one. We approved one hotel in downtown-specific plan, that's it. And as far as the commercial goes versus residential, the plan was for almost 4,500 to 6,000 units of residential units, and 1.7 million square feet of commercial. For the commercial side, there's only 180,000 square foot built. So that's why the commercial, we want to, we want to keep the balance between residential and commercial, and not many office buildings are being built. That's why this moratorium does not include commercial units, because we are still short, way behind neighboring cities. And as many of you know, we are competing for those tax dollars. We're competing for those jobs. If you don't have the units to support it, the big businesses will not come to Glendale to bring their high-paying employees to Glendale, so we can have that economic spinoff in our downtown. So, and this is called, as I mentioned last time, this is called gap study. You just pause for a short period of time and review your options. I don't think we have time today to go over all the options that we have, but I think we can get some of our answers within the 45 days or 35 days, and at that time, decide if you want to go to a full-blown moratorium, and what comes back after that. Let's say, one year, you have a one-year moratorium. What's going to happen after that? Are we going to change, you know, DSP to downzone it? Are we going to take the incentives out? I think these are, these items can be talked about within the next 35 days, and make an educated decision. But I'm okay with 45 days today, you know, to get the answers to some of the questions that we have.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'll move the urgency ordinance at 7:00.
There are no other discussions. We have a motion and a second roll call, please.
Councilmembers Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
No.
Mayor Garpetian?
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item on the agenda. At 8:00 B is General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding approval of alternative project delivery method for Glendale Water and Power's utility fiber optic business plans, proposed fiber network design, engineer, and build project. B1 is resolution authorizing City Manager to use the Engineer/Procure/Construct EPC Alternative Project Delivery Method, authorizing issuance of a request for proposals to prospective EPC contractors. Is this?
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, we'll go directly to Steve Zern, General Manager of Glendale Water and Power.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is what amounts to the final component of our overall fiber business plan, and will then set the course for us to pursue our fiber business, if you will, and this is the infrastructure upgrades to the system. So previously, the council had approved the general business plan. We had approved rate schedule. The ISD department had the first leg of this, and that was to make the connection to One Wilshire and bring that into the city at two locations. And now, this is a three-phase project, three years, 19, 20, 21, where we will build out the infrastructure and have it available for our businesses to purchase dark fiber from us, dark, high-speed fiber from us throughout the city. As you may recall, the business model had shown quite a bit of interest from the business community for this, and we anticipate that this will be a very thriving business, very similar to what they've done in Burbank and succeeded. We have a similar mix in our high-tech business environment. So we're looking at this to kind of phase in from probably about a million and a half in revenue for the first year, and when we build it out, we're looking at closer to 2.5 million. That's net, after expenses, with an ROI of probably less than seven years for the entire investment in the infrastructure. And as you may recall, a lot of the infrastructure is ours already, and by that, I mean, we had installed it to do various other things, such as our automated metering infrastructure, Mr. Galanian's traffic signal system, our SCADA system. So a lot of the resources were already available, and we capitalized on those. So tonight is simply a request for your approval to use an alternative method. We will put this out to bid. We will be back to you with the results of those bids and an award of a contract, so there'll be another opportunity to look at the details of the project. With Adam, happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Councilmember Agajanian?
I can't remember if I looked at it. What's the estimated bid, which you are expecting approximately?
The revenue we're expecting?
No.
I'm sorry.
Those who will bid on this?
Yes.
What's the approximate amount that you expect?
There's at least three firms, we believe, that are interested in that. It could be more.
No, but cost-wise, how much the project costs?
Total three years is $3.5 million.
Yeah, I saw it.
It's broken out. I don't have an exact breakdown each year, but it's roughly about a third, a third, a third.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions? Motion?
I'll move the item.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Garpetian?
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item is oral communications. Discussion is limited to items not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. City Manager may refer that matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Okay, first speaker is Otei Motropoulos. I'm trying really hard.
Hi, sir.
Kathy. It's an, oh, okay. Followed by Glenn Webb. Followed by Dan Brodmann. Followed by Vivian Conchan.
Hello.
Hi.
Good evening. In November of 2017, I went to a week-long seminar held in San Diego, and the topic was opioids and marijuana. So the keynote speakers, they spoke on the subject of marijuana for three days, and the director, the California Director of Public Health, Dr. Karen Smith, was the keynote speaker. And the highlights of her presentation were, in the past, pot use was, the risks of it were exaggerated, because the levels of THC were very low. Today, the levels of THC are consistently many times higher, and today, the risks are being downplayed or ignored. So the risks are especially grave to the under-21. Now, what happened was, the director challenged the attendees, who are about 300 attendees, to engage in a grassroots educational effort to enlighten their communities and prevent drug abuse. So a group of us took up that challenge, and we started doing small educational seminars to Glendale and Pasadena residents. So we talked to dental groups, youth groups, church groups, women's groups, and we did it for about six months now, and we found the public to be very open to marijuana education and prevention. Now, we're not experts, but fortunately, we don't need to be, because the Department of Public Health has prepared all the material, and all you really have to do is read along with the material that's been prepared by the experts. So at the, excuse me, at the Pasadena City Council meeting last night, their public health department put out displays on smoking and marijuana, and they featured young speakers. Their director, Mr. Johnson, said they had very little money to counteract the ads that were being put out by the cannabis industry, which are obviously promoting and commercializing this drug. And he, again, urged the public to use their material. So I'd just like to show it to you, councilmembers. I can see it's not terribly interesting to you guys, because I think you guys understand what this is about, but you know what? A lot of your community doesn't. So I'm speaking to the public, and hopefully, you will also listen to me. The majority of people that we've given meetings to can't define THC, they can't define CBD, they don't know the basic rules. So this covers that point. It says, you know, this is just marijuana facts. And again, this was what is being given out by our public health. So it says stuff like, "As with most drugs, marijuana use interferes with judgment. It leads to risky behavior, risky sexual behavior, contracting sexually transmitted diseases. In addition to psychosis, regular marijuana use has been linked to increased risks for depression, anxiety, suicidal thoughts, and personality disturbances." The primary thing is, they have two booklets. One covers teen use, and one is just general. And what we wanted to do is, from time to time, come before the council and tell you what, how many seminars we've done, how many people in Glendale we've reached, how many people in Pasadena, and also give you articles that cover the bigger picture, such as what's happening in Colorado, what's happening in L.A. City, their efforts to close their hundreds of unpermitted dispensaries, and how the LAPD is doing with that effort, and also just simple things such as this. This is an article that's fairly recent from NBC News, and it covers the results of the Colorado lab tests. And it talks about what's really in and not in the Colorado retail weed. And after analyzing more than 600 samples of the bud provided by certified growers and so forth, he found that there was almost no CBD, and CBD is what's, has to do with the medicinal part of cannabis, and that the samples were covered with fungus and were actually dangerous to people. So that's my effort. I hope you don't mind me bringing this subject up, but we'd like to kind of update you on our community efforts to do education. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Glenn Webb, followed by Dan Brodmann.
So I just click on to advance?
Just as you would a regulator knows.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. I came this evening to talk about choices, choices this council will be making in the coming months regarding our energy future. You are the CEOs of this city and all of its 14 departments, including Glendale Water and Power, and so you bear the burdens of the choices you make. So as you consider your decision, I ask you a question. Are you smarter than the government of South Australia, which is installing solar power and Tesla power walls on 50,000 homes to create the largest virtual power plant in the world? Whoops. Can I go back? No, I can't.
Do a left click.
Oh, left click?
Previous. Previous, go up.
Up where?
Right in the middle. Just don't touch the mouse. Thank you, Mr. Webb. Don't move anything.
So I can't go back?
We are in control, Mr. Webb.
Okay.
Do not adjust your screen.
All right. Or are you smarter than the CEO of Tesla, Elon Musk, who just installed the largest battery storage facility in the world to complement South Australia's installation of solar and wind power? And also, for the first time, has begun reusing space vehicles like the Falcon Heavy? Or perhaps, all right, that was the previous chart. Or perhaps, you're like the CEO of La Paloma Generating Company, LLC, whose general manager convinced them to build a modern 1,200-megawatt gas-fired plant in McKittrick, California in 2004, to serve the energy needs of both Los Angeles and San Francisco areas. La Paloma operated for 13 years, racked up $600 million in debt, and filed for bankruptcy in December of 2017. In this slide, or perhaps, we could learn from the CEO of NRG Energy, who in October of 2016 canceled plans for the La Puente Power Project when the California Energy Commission notified him, quote, "We intend to issue a decision recommending denial of the project on the grounds that it creates inconsistencies with the law, ordinances, regulations, and standards, and will cause significant environmental impacts that cannot be mitigated." NRG placed their La Puente operating unit into bankruptcy, and a few months later, closed three of their other gas-fired plants in California. Soon thereafter, the California Independent System Operator, which manages the state's electric grid, issued a 46-page report, offering three alternatives to the Puente Natural Gas Plant in Oxnard, focusing largely on the use of solar power and energy storage to ensure the reliability of electric service in their local area. So will you take the path of Grayson Repowering and allow GWP to build the last gas-fired power plant in California? Or will you choose a different path? Will you continue to approve of higher and higher electric rates to pay the increased salaries, pension benefits, and increased operating costs of GWP? Thinking that your customer base is a captive audience with no options, as it has been for 70 years? Or will you choose a clean-energy path, and a path with lower energy costs for your constituents? One thing to consider... Oh, shoot.
Can you go back one slide, please?
Sorry. One thing to consider, as you make your choice, is that the residents of Glendale also have a choice, and they can make that choice irrespective of what this council does. As GWP rates continue to escalate and the cost of solar and battery storage continues to decline, the clean-energy choice becomes more and more compelling, and residential and commercial installations will accelerate rapidly, no matter what GWP or this council does. Consider three options available today to Glendale residents, and these options have nothing to do with Glendale, with Grayson Repowering. They can purchase a system themselves. They can lease a system with no upfront costs. Or they can continue to purchase their power from GWP. You can clearly see from this chart, you look down at the numbers at the bottom, that their choice, how their choice will affect their energy costs for the next 30 years, the choice should be obvious. I made a choice, I made choice number one 10 years ago, when solar and battery storage were much more expensive than they are today. My investment is now completely recouped. Distributed energy resources with solar and battery storage are the inevitable future. How much more effective could we all be if GWP, the Glendale City Council, and the residents of Glendale all cooperated to bring this about instead of battling it every step of the way?
Thank you.
I just have one more short paragraph here. I have said many times that I have been working on a plan to bring a zero-carbon energy economy to Glendale by the year 2030. That plan is now completed. I will begin introducing that plan to this council next week. And please remember, if you're not as smart as many of those who have chosen the clean-energy path, you can always ask for help. Thank you.
Dan Brodmann, followed by Vivian Conchan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, city staff. I think I've lost everybody here to their phones and iPads. Anyway, here...
Not everybody.
Not everybody. Sorry. I'm sorry. I'm here once again on Grayson. Someday, I will come here and speak...
I know you want to be all-inclusive, but not everyone.
Okay. I was going to say, someday, I'll be here and speak about something else, but not yet. I still need more to say about Grayson. I want to talk about costs and rates today. So Glendale Water and Power has been saying the project was sized to meet Glendale's needs, and that they have no plans to sell power. In fact, they've been careful lately to say they have no plans to sell power for profit. I've noticed that inserted. I'm not sure why they're adding the for-profit part. In any case, they are at least giving the impression that power sales are no longer part of the equation for this project. Now, it's very, very clear to anybody who looks back at what was written and said in 2014 and 2015, that selling excess power was a key assumption underlying the project's economics. For instance, the IRP, as I've said before, says that the 250-megawatt option, which is the one that's under consideration, relies heavily on market sales. Those were the exact words, relies heavily on market sales. And it was recommended that GWP find a partner to take up some of the excess power, and then there are many other conversations that took place in this council room and that are on the record about, you know, selling power to pay down... that are on the record about, you know, selling power to pay down, or to help to fray bond costs. So it was clearly part of the equation. Something has changed, and my question is this. If the financials were dependent on power sales in two thousand fifteen, and we've now taken power sales out of the equation, how are those lost revenues going to be recovered? Has GWP magically found some new savings that were not foreseen in two thousand fourteen or two thousand fifteen? I would like to know, because all of my finance experience tells me that when you change a key revenue assumption like that, something has to give somewhere else. My guess is that what gives will be utility rates. Now, GWP is saying utility rates will not go up as a result of the repowering, and again, they're careful to say that, that caveat, as a result of the repowering. I get it that nobody wants to be pinned down forever on things like rates, but there's just too much wiggle room here. My guess is that GWP fully expects to sell the excess power, maybe not for a profit, whatever that means, but they do plan to sell. If you build a plant like this, which is actually only needed for five hundred hours out of the year, and that figure comes from expert analysis based on GWP's own data, the plant would be designed for only five hundred hours out of the year. When you build something like that, it's financially irresponsible to leave it idle. You almost have a fiduciary responsibility to run it. So of course, GWP will run the plant outside of those five hundred hours, and of course, there will be excess power, and of course, they will try to sell it into the market. You would have to be pretty gullible to believe otherwise. But here's the rub. What if they can't sell it, or what if they can't get reasonable prices for it? Because let's face it, the state has roughly twice as much capacity in gas as it needs, and units that are ten years old are being mothballed for lack of demand. Who makes up the lost revenue in that case? Well, the ratepayers, of course. But how about the promise that rates won't go up? Well, this will be different. Rates are going up because of changes in the market. It's not the repowering. It's out of GWP's control. That's what we'll hear. And we'll hear the same thing, if, and maybe I should say when, the state legislature mandates that all utilities get to a hundred percent zero carbon by two thousand forty-five. Soon as that's announced, what will happen? We will have to accelerate depreciation of Grayson to match the new expected economic life. Any accountant will tell you that, and this will increase accounting costs. Where will those costs go? They have to go somewhere, and my guess is they'll go to the weakest link in the chain, the ratepayers. Okay? And of course, GWP will pin it on Sacramento, not the repowering, but it's all the same. The repowering is so expensive and so flawed from a financial perspective that it's inevitable rates will rise and probably rise significantly. And GW's claim, GWP's claims to the contrary are just not credible. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Last speaker is Vivian Cantion.
Good evening, Mayor Garpetian, councilmembers, and everyone on staff. I'm Vivian Cantion, once again. I would like to say something not so much about Grayson itself, but about the bigger picture of Glendale's commitment to addressing climate, the climate crisis. I was really proud when I read that the council voted to join the mayor's National Climate Action Agenda last summer. At the time, I was feeling really discouraged at how the administration was turning against climate action. So to see my own city stand up for the Paris Accord meant a lot. And when I read in the news press that Mayor Garpetian said we were working on one hundred percent reliance on renewable energy by two thousand forty-five, I felt really hopeful. More recently, I've been following developments in Pasadena with their climate action plan, and you probably know that they approved the plan just a few weeks ago, which calls for a fifty-nine percent reduction in citywide greenhouse gas emissions by two thousand thirty-five compared to two thousand nine levels. This would put it in line with the state of California's goals outlined in SB thirty-two. Mayor Tornak also mentioned the idea of getting to one hundred percent zero-carbon electricity by two thousand thirty-five, although it was only to start the conversation on the issue. Anyway, I started wondering whether Glendale has a climate action plan similar to this, and I, I was kind of surprised to find out that we don't. All we have is a greener Glendale plan from two thousand and twelve, and this plan commits us to reducing greenhouse gas emissions by about six percent from two thousand nine levels by two thousand and thirty-five. Six percent compared to Pasadena's fifty-nine percent. So also, this plan was supposed to be renewed, looked at, updated after five years, but that never happened. Now, I know that the GWP points to its power content label to show how far ahead it is in renewable power, and that's a great thing, but I do wonder how much of that is because we're using Grayson mostly just to burn biogas from Scholl, and that counts as renewable. So if we do end up repowering and we start running the combined cycle units around the clock as they're designed to run, we would have a lot more gas in our portfolio. That would push our numbers back down to whatever the minimums were allowed according to SB thirty-five. So I just wanted to raise this issue, hoping that you will consider a climate action plan for Glendale and a date certain to get GWP to one hundred percent clean energy. In this context, I should also mention that a Grayson repowering according to the Environmental Impact Report would increase the city's, our city's greenhouse gas emissions by twenty-five percent from two thousand nine levels. So I don't really see how this could possibly be consistent with any future climate action plan, and in fact, it's exactly the opposite of where we're supposed to be going. Thank you for your time.
Just, just a quick, you can have a seat. Comparing Glendale to Pasadena, I don't, I don't know if it's a right comparison or not. We may not call it a climate action plan, but we've been working on it for a long time. Pasadena has forty percent coal on their portfolio, forty percent. Ours is less than four. So we've been doing our share while our neighboring city's been really dragging it along and kicking the, the can down the road, and our, our renewable portfolio is forty-seven percent. Just, just to, just to put it out there for the public to know, because we may not call it a, a climate action plan. The plan is in place and we've been working on it. So with that, is there?
There's new business.
There's new business? Okay.
Right on, Mr. Mayor. I like the way you put it in perspective. Sometimes it's appreciated as a good
Thank you.
level, but sometimes you have to remind, can keep it in perspective. I have new business, Mr. Mayor. I move that the city attorney be and hereby is authorized to enter into a legal services agreement with the law firm ETJ Law Incorporated to prepare a legal opinion under Utah law for the city of Glendale and to incur all necessary expenses in connection therewith. The agreement shall, in addition to other provisions, contain a fee cap and an estimated budget for the handling of said matter.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sananian?
Yes.
Mayor Garpetian?
Yes.
Mr. Ajarn? Second.